So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the July 22nd, 2020, 2025 meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask Reverend McCur if he would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Amen. Thank you. And on behalf of the Prince Frederick Seventh Adventist Church, thank you for all that you do and the deep work that you that you put in care for the community. And we pray that the Lord may continue to guide you in every step. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gathering that you have brought us to be here this morning. And the privilege of serving this county together with our leaders. And we acknowledge that all leadership ultimately comes from you. And we ask for your wisdom, your grace over this meeting. We lift up each commissioner and every leader represented here today. And may they be guided by justice, compassion, and integrity. We also pray for all the citizens in Calver County, for their well-being, safety, and peace. Bless every organization and agency that works toward healing, order, and direction. May their efforts honor you, Lord, we ask, not only for you to guide today's agenda, but that you shape the agenda of our hearts. May your spirit surround this county and our nation, and may your glory be revealed through our work and decisions. In Jesus' name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So, thank you, Pastor. And Pastor comes to us today from the Seventh Day Adventist Church in Port Republic, right there on Boones Island Road, correct? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
I believe that we approve and adopt the agenda as published.
Second. Have motion, the second, that we approve the agenda as published. Any discussion on that motion hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Imposed motion carries. So, I do have a couple of public service announcements today. Also, before I get started, I want to thank Commissioner Allen for filling in for me last week while I was on vacation. I heard he did an excellent job, so.
Thank you for the opportunity, sir.
I tried to get him sitting in your chair there. I told him he was throwing the camera off by not being there, but he didn't believe me.
I checked it this morning in case there were booby traps there or something.
But I told him, look, be safe. Just leave your name on there. So, if he says anything funny, they're gonna go.
They're all gonna think.
Did you hear what he answered?
I told him. Just trying to help. Just want to let everybody know that State Highway Administration is seeking input to improve road safety. So, the Maryland Department of Transportation will be holding a virtual public meeting, which is today, from four to six, where attendees can ask questions and provide feedback on areas of interest. Residents are also encouraged to participate in an online survey, open now through August 7th, 2025. Feedback will help identify safety needs and recommend improvements to key walking and biking routes. You can visit www.roads.maryland.gov to take the survey and learn more. And just want to remind everybody, we also have M.D.O. comes in twice a year to give us updates and provide feedback, so we would appreciate citizens reaching out, so it's not just us that are voicing these concerns and issues, and that they're hearing from the everyday citizens. And also, I want to make people aware, I think we've done some communications through social media, that the speed limit on Cox Road in Huntington has been reduced. And that will be effective on Monday, August 18th. The posted speed limit on Cox Road will be reduced from 30 to 25 miles an hour to enhance pedestrian safety. There is a little private school there on the road, so right there in front of that school, the limit's going to be reduced to 20 miles per hour during posted school hours. There will be some electronic message signs that will be temporarily placed in the area to alert drivers of the changes. Your attention and cooperation to help protect our students and the community is greatly appreciated.
I know. I let him run me one week, and he doesn't trust that I can do it for one day.
No, that's not true. I'm just forgetting.
I'm not gonna forget. Next, we have a presentation by Department of Economic Development, the 2025-2031 Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Great. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I'm very pleased to be here today. This has been some time coming to update our strategic plan. And we have Sage Policy Group, CEO and Chairman Ani Ban Vasu, here to present the strategic plan. In the interest of time, so we can focus more on the actual presentation and the plan itself, and any questions you may have, I'll forego reading the memo, if that's okay, and just hand it over to Mr. Vasu.
Righto. Thank you very much. Thank you to the Commissioners for inviting me here today to talk about the plan. The plan is for the period 2026 to 2031. I welcome any of your questions, Chair, and all others on the Commission. So, let me just go through it. What's, what was the goal here? To update and revise the previous report and establish strategic economic development priorities and actions for Calver County for the period 2026 to 2031. We analyzed a range of data from the Bureau of Economic Analysis, Bureau of Statistics, others, characterizing Calver County demographically, how it's developed, who lives here, who's moved, who's come, who's staying, who's leaving, so on and so forth. We've also reviewed all prior economic development strategies for this county. We conducted a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, what are. Of course, the economy is in tumult right now, lots of change in the air, and so we wanted to help position Calver County, along with Department of Economic Development, to face the challenges of the future. Some of them are known, many are not. And then, we also conducted focus group meetings. We talked to your stakeholders regarding what they view as elevated quality of life, what they view as the principal challenges facing this community economically and otherwise, and what are the principal opportunities as well that can be positively leveraged. Just some notes on Calver County. Population 95,000, labor force is around 49,000, unemployment rate is 2.8%. This is one of Maryland's most affluent jurisdictions. Very high median household average, about 30% above the statewide average. And as you know, Maryland has still, despite some challenges, one of the highest median household incomes in the nation. Public schools excel, whether the three high schools, et cetera, in several areas, high attendance and graduation rates, for instance. However, public school enrollment has declined. And part of that is probably because of policymaking. And we'll talk about that policymaking in a moment. Population is aging. They're slowing birth rates, of course, that is a phenomenon we observe nationally. The fertility rate in America is down to around 1.62, replacement fertility is 2.1. So, as time passes, and of course, immigration policies in flux nationally, this country is actually positioned to lose population. It's still the case that population is growing in this country around 340 million, but population is growing more slowly, and Calver County is an element of that or an example of that. Some other demographic findings, the population is becoming both older and more diverse. The share of populations 65 and older expanded from 8.9% in 2000 to almost 16% in 2022. The non-white population increasing from around 16% to 22%. Population growth actually accelerated between 2020 and 2024, averaging a bit less than 1% annual, 0.6% annually. One of the things that we observed during the pandemic and the initial stage of recovery there from are some centrifugal forces, meaning people were looking to move to less densely populated, less expensive communities. Now, Calver County is quite expensive, of course, but it's not particularly densely populated by Maryland standards. And so, we saw a fair, and, and part of this was remote work. Part of this was a desire to social distance during an epidemic or a pandemic. But Calver County did pick up some population, but still, 0.6% historically in this county is not quite. It would not be deemed to be especially fast. Calver County's population growth is directed to slow going forward, with annual growth rate declining to 0.4% between 2025 and 2030, and then to just 0.08% by 2040. And this gives you some sense of the forecast regarding population growth in out years. The first set of bars there are 2025 to 2030. The green colored bar is Maryland, the blue colored bar is Calver County. And you can see, so what is expected? And again, what is this? This is an outgrowth of largely slowing birth rates, but also the fact that as population ages, people don't live forever, of course. And so, that's circumstance. Now, policy can shift this, but the question then becomes whether you want policy to shift that. I, I think a fair number of people in this county don't want that much growth. I'm one of the few economists, probably the only one in the world, to write the economic development strategy for Oxford, Maryland. And having conducted numerous focus groups in Oxford, Maryland, I can tell you that they want no growth there. In fact, I think they get upset when the wind blows because the grass moves. They don't want any change whatsoever. And so, there are people in this community that are similarly situated, as it turns out. But then, the question becomes, what about the fact that the county has bills to pay? That it needs a tax base? And we'll talk about some of the more important taxpayers as we go through the presentation. So, key findings regarding the economy, commuting is typical, nearly 70% of the people who live in this county with a job commute out of this county for that job. One of the things that's been discussed for many years, if not decades, in Calver County is, is it possible to have higher-quality jobs here, so people do not have to go into Enron County, or Prince George's County, or the District of Columbia, so on and so forth? We know that, of course, the federal workforce has some challenges. The recent estimate suggests that 3,093 Calver County residents works for the federal government. Only about 392 federal jobs in this county, but 3,093 people who live in this county and work, work for the federal government. And we, and we know that that employment is under some pressure. Local government accounts for nearly 20% of employment. The largest private sector employment segments are trade, transportation, utilities, that's your supply chain. That's your retailers, your distributors, your truck drivers, fulfillment center workers, education, health services. And one would think that health services would be a source of economic growth going forward, or job growth going forward, given that the population is aging, and that leads to higher utilization rates, however. Many major medical systems are running out of money. Nurses have become very, very expensive. We know that the one big beautiful bill has passed, and whether or not people like that or not, and this is a county that went 54-43 for Donald Trump, the President of the United States, but that is, all things be equal, going to cut Medicaid, for instance, among other programs. That might lead to more, or more uninsured patients, and therefore, more uncompensated care. In Maryland, as you know, we have a different system for handling uncompensated care than the balance of the country at the hospital system level. But this is another concern regarding whether or not health services will continue to be a job generator going forward. And then, leisure hospitality, that's your hotels and restaurateurs, for the most part.
Do you want me to wait till after your presentation?
No, Commissioner, you have been elected, so you get to ask questions whenever you would like.
And, and I appreciate the speed, because I do. But a couple of things, you know, you mentioned declining the school system. Now, that's been happening for a long time, but I, I would think you're finding that's a culture thing. Children, kids are not having kids at the rate that they used to have. It's not the importance as previous generations, where you got married, you started families. So, I don't think, and I mean, I know this is what you do for a living, but I don't think that's just exclusive to Calver County. Probably globally, you'd think you'd find that. Also, too, we're unique in our geographic design. We have one road, really. It's Route Four. And if you also notice, most communities in here really only has one access road out. When you put that 70% of people driving out of there, out of here, that's probably a little unique, too, in that. So, so I know what you're saying about, you know, with growth and money, but for us, a lot of times, it actually costs us more money because we don't have the infrastructure to handle it. I mean, if, if we, if we weren't the peninsula, and maybe we had more growth, like even like St. Mary's County, which is a little wider, different access points, this, that, and the other, you would have more opportunities for maybe different economic opportunities in different places. But here, you have to put it all in one spot, which is a logjam, you know? And also hurts business sometimes, because sometimes when they're coming down the road, they just don't want to stop. They finally got moving, and they want to go. So, I don't know that, one, without doing something radical, you're going to change the growth. Me personally, I have no appetite for that whatsoever, because many things. With that growth, teachers, EMT services, law enforcement, it's a lot of expense comes with that. And back to you, you've got one road to get them out of here.
No, all those points are absolutely fair. You're right, for instance, your first point, that public school enrollment, or school enrollment generally, is falling in many communities as America gets older, and people have fewer children. Like I say, the fertility rate is 1.62. It happens to be the fertility rate higher among immigrants. So, in communities that are immigrant-rich, let's say, communities in Florida, or Texas, or Arizona, something like this, you would tend to see higher birth rates, and therefore, you don't have, and of course, you have lots of in-migration to those communities. We in Maryland don't have a lot of in-migration, as you know. A lot of people are moving out of this state. We've got some real economic challenges here.
Well, they're taxed out of the state. They can't afford to stay. Retirees can't stay. Yeah, I mean, no matter, you could have 20 malls or whatever, they can't afford to stay. If you're military, your pensions are taxed. I mean, they, Maryland's been shedding residents for years, because they can't afford, they, they love it here. It's been their home. They're leaving their families, because they can't afford to stay here.
There isn't an affordability issue, there's no question about that, Commissioner. But the point is, the county still has bills to pay. As that county's population becomes more reliant on fixed incomes, Social Security, for instance, the question then becomes, who are the taxpayers of the future? How do you invite them in? Do you invite them in? Look, I mean, I've heard some of the conversation this morning. One of the big topics has been homelessness. I understand that the county, like any community, is concerned about external factors encroaching upon this county and creating new problems, including fiscal issues, for instance, the need for greater services, whether it's public safety or those kinds of services. I want to talk about all of those things, and see if there's a way to think about Calver County's future in a way that balances this county financially and demographically. Because one of the other things that I hear from people, and we'll talk about the focus groups in a moment, is that many people who have raised families in this county would love it if they, if their children had the opportunity to come back at some point. If the jobs were here for them to come back. So, you know, it's natural, you know, you talk to these Maryland kids, and if they go off to college, they often want to leave the state. Not always, sometimes go to College Park, or UMBC, or wherever it happens to be, Towson. But often, you know, for instance, with my own daughter, she insisted that the one thing she wanted to do, she's going to be a freshman college this year, is to get away from you, Dad. So, you know, and that's fine, and she's going to Ithaca, New York, for college, and so that's fine. But I hope she comes back, and I hope she has an opportunity to come back when she's ready to come back to her mom.
A lot of times, a lot of our youth, they leave, they go do things, but when they come to raise a family, they come back here because they remember being safe and quiet, and all the quality life things that they want to raise a family in a safe community. And if you change that culture, you know, because, well, going once again, you just don't have the, you don't want, you don't have water and sewer. So, you can't, if, once you start trying to put all these things in there, the problems that you unleash, you don't have, you have septic failures, you have problems with, I mean, it's just, and, I mean, what are we, 38 miles long, seven miles wide?
You're the smallest county in Maryland, 213 square miles.
You can only put so much in that lunchbox.
No, I understand. No, we'll, we'll talk about each of these things, just some key findings on the economy. I will address everything you've said, and you can come back to me with questions. Agriculture, of course, continues to play a significant role in this county. And in the focus groups, many people indicated that one of the most important things for them was for Calver County to retain its rural heritage. We've heard that constantly, and I'm hearing some of that you, from you, Commissioner, that you, you want to maintain that rural heritage. No one wants to look like Waldorf. And that is the great fear, Waldorf. No one wants to look like that. And when you have a very limited land area, you can't afford to have a Waldorf. That's poor planning, frankly. So, I, I appreciate that. And again, rural heritage really matters. So, the question becomes, again, can that county retain its quality of life, its existing legacies, meaning that rural legacy, for instance, and still pay its bills? Still be of interest to young people who want to come back to the county, because they grew up here, for instance? Or they want to come here because there's a high shared quality of life? Is there a, a, a role for entrepreneurship? Is this the kind of county that would attract entrepreneurs? You need a fair amount of economic dynamism for that. So, we'll talk about all of these things. As you know, real property tax collections are the largest revenue source of Calver County, but this county has really figured it out in some sense. Because this county has at least two major taxpayers, the Clean Energy Center at Calver Cliffs, that's $23 million, as I understand it. And then, the LNG terminal, which has been a great source of support to the Maryland economy. You look at total exports from Maryland, thank goodness for that LNG terminal, because that's really bolstered our export base, but as I understand it, under a.
Yes, Ted Maryland gets a lot out of that, don't they?
They do.
Yeah, it's saying they keep cutting us on the side, you'd think it'd be a little more appreciative, but I guess that's a different discussion.
I, I know, I think we have to leave from the Moore administration here, so I'm not going to say anything about that. But the point is, I, I think that there's a payment in lieu of taxes deal around that $60 million a year, sort of like this. So, that's significant. And we'll talk about it, but there's been a lot of talk in this county now about data centers and attendant energy sources, energy generation. This is a community that's, unlike any other community in Maryland, accustomed to living in the presence of nuclear generation. That's quite an advantage economically, as it turns out, to the extent that it might open the door to future development of that kind of clean energy source. But perhaps more on that in a moment. But again, large-scale data center or centers would pay a fair amount of taxes, or payment in lieu of tax, whatever the arrangement happens to be. And what that means is that the county conceivably, theoretically, could pay its bills without generating a lot of household growth, for instance, or even business formation, because there'll be new taxpayers coming to the county. Employment in Calver County has nearly returned to the pre-pandemic levels, down just 1% in 2024 compared to 2019. So, this is growth in Calver County employment by establishment, meaning these are jobs in Calver County as opposed to residence employment. These are jobs in Calver County 2019 versus 2014. And what you can see, your Commissioners, is that many segments have not yet recovered to their pre-pandemic level of employment. At the top of that list is leisure hospitality. Again, that's your hotels and restaurants. I'm a big fan of restaurants. I think restaurants are a very important part of quality of life, social fabric, so on and so forth. They have to be meeting places, places where families can be together, but others can be together. The community tends to congregate in various places, but restaurants happen among them. And what we have seen is some loss in restaurant employment in this county, and it does perhaps speak to a bit of a loss in economic vitality and spending power. Construction, same story. Construction is the alteration of our shared built environment. When you see communities that have not added many construction jobs, or in this case, lost construction jobs, that might speak to a lack of investment, whether in residential or non-residential structures, manufacturing. I don't want to go through all of this, a handful of jobs lost in that segment as well. If you look at the segments that have gained jobs, you would say, oh, this is good, Ani, but these segments have gained jobs. But look at the character of these segments. Number one sector adding jobs, local government. And as you know, when President Biden signed the, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, on March 11th of 2021, state and local governments received $350 billion in direct federal support from the, the state and local governments received direct federal support in $350 million. As far as I can tell, in many jurisdictions across our state, that money has been spent. There's a time limit on when that money had been spent, so it had to be spent. That's not a criticism at all of any community. But the money is now gone, and it's not clear to me that local government will continue to be a source of employment growth going forward, and then, federal government.
Are you talking about like ARPA funds and things like that?
That's right, ARPA.
Yeah, but see, that's not sustainable, so you don't build your economy on that anyway. We, we knew that, I mean, if you remember, the first report came out, we were told we could have seen a 30% reduction in just income tax. And at the time, I think we were around, what was it, 98 or 102 million dollars in that? So, that would have been devastating, right? But then, they started funneling money to where everybody was staying home. So, I, correct me if I'm wrong, what the state was doing, $400 unemployment or something, and then the federal government came back with 600? But it was about $1,000. So, we're actually seeing growth from that. But anybody that built their economy on that or their budget was a fool, because it's, it's not real. I mean, that, that money, we were not earning, that was basically funds from the federal government that could be pulled at any time. So, all that hospitality stuff, when you see like that, I mean, they were funding a lot of that, but they weren't open, if you remember. You know, they were closed, but they were able to get a lot of funding. I forgot, what was the, the loan that was out there?
Paycheck protection? Oh, no, you're talking about somebody else.
You know what you're talking about, yeah. So, that wasn't real either. So, you had to know that that bubble was going to pop, and basically, we were going to have to go back to how we were in 2019.
Fair enough. I mean, I, I would agree that that was one-time money coming out of the ARPA, and should have been spent as one-time money.
There was strict regulations, and that's why we didn't get in the trick bag, where other jurisdictions were using that to hire jobs and, and sustain it. And we knew that, that was, that was almost like getting a grant.
Right. Some governments operationalized that money as opposed to taking it as one-time money and spending it for one-time purposes, like school construction, or so on and so forth. And then, of course, as soon as that ARPA money ran out, all of a sudden, guess what? You've got a $3.3 billion fiscal shortfall in Annapolis. There's no mystery here. And you know, after 52 years of having universal AAA bond rating, we can no longer say that as a state. We've been dead downgraded by Moody's. So, I understand.
You see it countrywide, too. There's only, what, 12 states that are maintaining that? And I'm not defending Maryland or here. We're going to have the same scrutiny. Moody's doesn't want to be in the game. So, Moody's always held that bar up a little high, and you, you know, you know the game, okay? Moody's has dangled that carrot out there, and for some reason now, they don't want to be in the game. I mean, am I wrong? It's only 12 states that are maintaining that, right?
I think it's a bit more than 12 states, but the point is, we were one of them.
The government doesn't have it right now, correct?
For 52 states, yeah, that most states don't have it, you're right.
Yeah, I mean, so, so, I mean, that's private industry, and people have been working around them for years, but they're acting like you're a complete failure. If you're not kissing their ring, only way you're going to maintain it, they want, what, 38% in reserves? It's like some ridiculous amount, so.
Commissioner, my only point is this, that the segments that have been adding jobs in recent years in Calver County are no longer positioned necessarily to add jobs.
I agree with that.
So, local government, federal government, one segment that stands to add jobs is the, the third segment from the bottom, which is your supply chain, retail, trade, wholesale, trade, transportation utilities, including utilities, for instance, in this county, depending on the investment profile going forward. But my point is, this is a county that is yet to return to 2019 employment levels, and the segments that have helped it move towards 2019 employment levels may no longer be adding jobs. And so, that creates some vulnerability here. So, key findings regarding housing, Calver County has low owner and renter vacancy rates, meaning the housing is occupied. I mean, the owner occupied vacancy rate, I think, when I studied it, was 0.4%. It, it's insanely low. When, when people say there's a housing shortage, what do they mean by that? That means if you build it, they will come, that it will be filled very, very quickly. Now, of course, the character of the units to be added will determine who fills that unit. And you, as policymakers, help shape that. What are they, rental units? Are they owner occupied units? What's the price point? There is an influence that policymakers can exert over those kinds of things. Cost of living is relatively high, and a lot of that, of course, has to do with housing. And there has been limited new housing development in recent years. Indeed, these are Calver County residential building permits. My very strong sense is, and you can disagree with me if you'd like, and my guess is, Commissioner, you very well might like to. But, but is that this is a pendulum swinging. So, there was a time, of course, when Calver County was one of the fastest-growing counties in this country, and there was a response to that, to slow down economic growth, not shut it down. You don't see permits here down to zero, but you see them getting closer to zero over time. And there's a desire to make sure that sprawl did not take over this county. I mean, Maryland is a really small state geographically. I mean, Maryland is a really small state geographically. And given our location on the East Coast, it would be pretty easy for us to create an environment in which the entire state was paved over. We don't want that, and we certainly don't want that for Calver County. The question, though, is, people have bills to pay, they need jobs. Businesses need a place to operate, people need a place to live. So where, how do you house that in a way that allows one to retain their rural heritage, rural legacy, and still pay the bills of government and allow households to pay for their various bills, whether it's electricity, or food, or whatever it happens to be? So key findings from people we interviewed in the community, and we interviewed many of your key business owners, for instance, agency heads, these types of people. I would say, broadly speaking, not to get too social media about it, but influencers in this community, people of, you know, with significant positions and who have been in this county for a long time. They tell us that quality of life is very high. And it is. Calver County is a land of pleasant living within the land of pleasant living. Calver County is very desirable. That's part of the reason there's a housing shortage, people want to be here. Tourism and agriculture are very important segments. And by the way, there's some overlap there, you know, agriculture and tourism often synergize. The town center concept identified as a strength, the town center concept is identified as a strength, not necessarily the town centers themselves. We'll talk more about those in a moment. And so various challenges, including housing affordability. Though, I must say, when people say that, the question becomes, who are we talking about when we're talking about housing affordability? I mean, whose housing affordability are we concerned about? Is it young professional families?
It's the workforce. It's our teachers, it's our firemen, it's our police officers. It's the workforce that is finding it hard to live here, and that's a big obstacle for us.
Right, I agree, Madam Commissioner, that, that's right, the workforce. But then, one could dig one level deeper, which parts of the workforce? Is it your retail worker? Is it the hotel maid? Yeah, is it the librarian? Is it the police officer, the firefighter? Is it the registered nurse? Or is it also the limited, or the LPN? That kind of practitioner who generally speaks, speaking like, makes less money? Which is the workforce you seek to house? Who among them? In Silicon Valley, you know, one county, Senate Clerk, County California, recently declared that any household making less than $250,000 a year is eligible for public assistance. So who, so who, to whom is the community to be affordable? For whom is it to be affordable? And you can say, well, it's the workforce, but then, there's so many layers of that workforce, one has to go one level deeper to understand, what, what is that? For whom shouldn't it be affordable? And of course, in, in Silicon Valley, it's affordable largely to people who control these technology companies or work in very high level positions. But the people who are providing janitorial service and others, they live two hours away often. So that, you know, that's still leaves, but I agree with you, it's the workforce. But one has to sort of segment that, and say, what parts of the workforce?
But we have offered incentives to these builders for workforce housing, but they always get the more money elsewhere. And so where do you draw that line in between what you're just talking about?
Yeah, that's a really great point, Commissioner, they all are. So developers need their performers to pencil out. They need their investors and the banker or the private credit person to say, yes, I will provide capital to your project so this project can move forward. And which performers are most likely to pencil out? Those are associated with the highest price points, if you're talking about owner occupied housing or highest rental rates, if you're talking about apartments. And that's what we build in this country by and large. We build very little housing that's really actually affordable to the bulk of the workforce. We build high-end housing, you know, for the very, very successful. What would you need to provide housing that was accessible to a, a broader cross-section of the workforce? If we're talking about workforce housing, you need density, probably. Because in this county, land is very precious and expensive. So if you're going to only build one or two or three units per acre, that's going to be very expensive housing. I'm not criticizing that, by the way. It's a democracy. The community should shape itself the way it wants to be shaped. That said, if you want, as a practical matter, as an economic matter, there to be greater affordability, you need more density, often communities. And by the way, it's not just the Calver counties of the world. I see in my county of Baltimore County, a real pushback against density. That county council downzones almost every property they get a chance to downzone. I'm not criticizing that.
Voting on that today about that same exact question and that in front of them today?
Yeah.
And that's Montgomery County.
Yeah, yeah. And it, so, you know, Montgomery County traditionally has embraced some density, right? But now the community is changing and so on and so forth, the politics there have very much changed. It's no longer Maryland's growth engine, it's absolutely stagnant economically. So, yeah, lots of things have changed in Maryland, there's no question about that. A lot, people have changed in terms of their view. My sense is, there might be more alarm about the possibility of strangers than there once was. Maybe a bit more xenophobia than there once was. I could be wrong about that. But when I go to various communities and talk to county commissioners or county executives, so on and so forth, and they tell me about what their stakeholders, their voters are saying, they're saying, we don't want this development. And the, the, the word they'll say to me is, well, because we're afraid of inviting in other elements that have historically not been here, whatever that means. It could be lower income, it could be all kinds of things. It's a democracy. People are allowed to feel the way they feel, and you represent, you know, you're the representatives of that democracy, and so I, I respect that. But economically, as an economist, I want things to work for you. I want you to be able to pay your bills, I want you to maintain your bond rating, I want you to be able to attract entrepreneurs, I want young people to be able to come back to this community if they want to come back. I don't want to see 70% of our workforce have to commute out of this county on the one road. That's not the highest possible quality of life. Again, at least not theoretically. So that's what we're talking about today.
I know that, you know, you say Oxford is zero build out Calver County. We're very close to that, that's what we want in this county. And I don't see it, in my 50-some years of living here, that anybody, I mean, most of us came from PG County when we moved down here, when they were building the, the power plant. But I don't, I don't see any resistance to different groups of people. I see a quality of life that we moved down here for, which we all enjoy, and in education. And we work very hard, and we're very small, and we're just about built out. So we are going to have to find other avenues, because density is number one for our population. And we've got it down, and it's not going up.
Right, and Madam Commissioner, I was, you know, making that comment about outsiders. I was speaking generally, not about Calver County specifically, but in any case, you hear about this. And it's actually one of the reasons that many people fight apartment projects in particular, as opposed to, and people will push back on development of any kind in many communities, of course. Single family will say, well, we don't want to look at rooftops. But I sense that there is greater antipathy towards apartment construction than owner occupied housing, as a general proposition, but.
It doesn't add, add anything to your, your base, your income base, you know.
The apartments, you mean multifamily?
In a small county like this.
I'm not, just, I'm not suggesting that you should develop apartments. I'm not, you know, so, please, I mean, I, I, what I'm saying is that I can understand why there's resistance to that. At the same time, if we say we want to house the workforce, not every member of the workforce can, you know, can get a mortgage under today's circumstances. Not everyone can afford a 6.75% 30% mortgage rate. So if, on the one hand, we can say, oh, we want to house the workforce, and I believe you said that, Madam Commissioner, that's what we're thinking about. But if they can't own homes because they just do not have the income, they don't have the 20%, then is it not the case that if you are sincere about wanting to house that workforce, that you have to think about multifamily to a certain extent?
But see, see.
Or I'm, I'm thinking more in terms of incentives. You know, have we explored incentives for the workforce? And I think that's something we need to take a look at, too. And I'm not, you gave a bright, a very, very broad range of, of workforce. And not everybody's going to own a home. My mother was the first one in her family to own a home. They were always renters. But for, for our workforce, if we can provide incentives, that's what I'd like to explore.
See, on your apartment piece, though, see, that is the tagline, right? That's, that's the bullet point, well, you don't have a house, you go there. But the misleading thing in, in these apartments most of the time is, they're not affordable. See, that's the thing. It's not like the person's going to get some $1,000 or $1,500 a month. No, sir, you know what those prices go to. Sometimes you see them as much as $3,000. So now, let's take that young couple, they get together, he's out of college, she's out of college, they're both making whatever it is out of there. They got 3K going in there, try to find a car, a new car under $25,000. I mean, the prices, all this stuff. But the problem is with that rental is, they never get to save any money to buy that house. These guys that put these apartments, they don't do rent to own. They don't do, you know, some type of incentive, like, okay, if you're a teacher, there's a break. They don't do any of that. They put that sucker all the way to the top. And if they can't rent it, then what do they do with it? Go to the state, because the state's got a stack of, stack of slips this big. And that's free money, because you can blow that apartment up, don't make a difference, because the state's going to pay to fix it. So it's a can't lose, there's no incentive for this guy to build an apartment to go, you know what, if you're a senior, I'm going to give you a rate at this, I'm going to rent some at market rate, I'm going to do some rent to own. Communities would embrace that, but it's all one-sided. And the reason that they're getting it is, like you say, because there's just not that much stuff out there. So somebody's going, you know, I don't have $25,000 to put down at settlement on a home. There are no CDA loans out there like there used to be. And the first time home buyer stuff is not as aggressive as it used to be, because there's not the real estate out there. So the, so the consumer or the person looking for a house really is not in a bargaining position, and the builders hold all the keys. They have all the leverage. So when you build this big monstrosity, what, how are they saving any money to put down on a house when those apartments are all market rate?
No, Commissioner, by the way, I came here this morning to Calver County precisely to have this kind of discussion. So I'm delighted to be meaningfully engaged. So you're 100% correct that when you look at the multifamily units that have been developed around the country, but also in Maryland, whether in central Maryland, Baltimore area, or, you know, Maryland's DC suburbs, it's been high-end, unaffordable. I mean, there's some millennials behind me, and if I met them, I probably would not like them. But, but the point is, they have reason to complain. They have reason to complain, because, look, they often graduated during the Great Recession, whether from high school or college, then they got their careers going, and bam, COVID. And then just when their careers had settled down a bit, they're making higher incomes, everything gets more expensive. Homes become more expensive, Nvidia stock becomes more expensive, gold becomes more expensive, $300, $400 an ounce today, Bitcoin becomes more expensive, $119,000, whatever it is. Everything got more expensive, and now they're stuck renting in very expensive apartments. They can't save for a home, they don't have an ownership or equity in almost anything, and they're working if they've done it right.
That's right, they've done everything that they were told to do, and now they come out. And we could talk all day long about when interest rates were lowered to 4% and what building costs used to be $60 a square foot, and builders said, ooh. You know, I mean, my first home loan was 8.78% on a CDA loan, and people were like, wow, man, you're under 11%. Well, the builders figured out that we are payment driven. Just like when you go look at that car, people don't go, how much is the car? How much is it a month? And they'd say the same thing with homes, they'd go, well, if they can afford $2,000 a month, and now the interest is lowered to 4%, I can inflate these costs and inflate these costs and get it. And I watched it happen all firsthand, and I'm not saying that everyone does that, but you can see cases across the board where building costs have shot all the way up. And we, as a government, only have so much control. You could make impact fees zero, you could make the cost to permit zero, but that's still marginal to what the cost of these homes are. And then you see with interest rates, it used to be, what, you borrow a dollar, you pay back three? So there are no CDA loans that I'm aware of that lets them get in for 5K at settlement, you know, that limits what the cost they can sell that house for, because there's no appetite for that on the building community.
Right, no, all, all, all fair points. Several challenges identified, as I say, housing affordability, lackluster economic growth, job availability, business attraction and retention, infrastructure limitation, we'll talk more about those, limited amenities, transportation constraints, actually, Commissioner, you brought that up. Mixed views on growth and nine opportunities for modernized government and planning. So what should Calver County prioritize is a survey that we conducted for things rose to the top of the list, community design and planning, business formation, expansion, retention, public investment in water slash sewer infrastructure, and increased housing options. This is our SWOT analysis, just some strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. We've talked about a lot of these kinds of things already, but some of the threats here, of course, is the aging population, the outmigration of youth or younger families because the cost of living has become so elevated, industry shifts, et cetera. And so climate change, though, that's probably more of an issue. You might have seen a Baltimore Sun article today about Chrisfield, Maryland. But in any case, those are some of the things that are happening, and I won't go through the entire SWOT analysis, this is in the report. So recommendations are split into two groups. I'm hitting the home stretch here, and then we can have further discussion, whatever you would like. Recommendations for economic development efforts in 2026 to 2031. So this is really intended for her agency, her department. These are, it's inside baseball. And what they might want to be focused on during the year. By the way, you have in, in Director Oberg, someone who has garnered the immense respect of this community. And whether it's pro-growth people, or no-growth people, or business people, or just citizens who are quite vocal, and there are many of them in this community, they all respect her. I may not agree with her on every issue, no one agrees with everyone on every issue, but they respect her. So that is a really a great start. So some of the recommendations intended for the economic development, I'll talk about those. And then for you, for your viewing pleasure, recommendations for long-term policy. So I'll go through some of those. So in respect to economic development efforts over the next five years or so, recommendations for business attraction retention, efforts including streamlining regulations, continue to revitalize main streets and other commercial areas, and repurposing, repurposing underutilized spaces for modern business needs. So what we would say is this, there was a governor several decades ago who I view as, and you may disagree with me, very underrated, named Paris Glendening. But his concept was smart growth and redevelopment of already existing areas and so on and so forth. This county has some opportunities for redevelopment.
You're right.
And, yeah, this, this county has some opportunities for redevelopment, right? And, and it should take full advantage of those, full advantage of those. And therefore, to preserve the green space, to prefer, to preserve the rural heritage and legacy and quality of life and so on and so forth, we think all this can be done. We don't think you have to do a lot of paving in this county or paving over this county to accommodate the economy of the future, not at all. But that said, there needs to be some real recognition that some of the areas in this community could be redeveloped for higher and better use, and therefore generate more tax base, a higher quality of life, and, and also opportunities for entrepreneurs. Recommendations for workforce development efforts include advocating for workforce housing and improved infrastructure, we've talked about that, but again, it's tricky. Recommendation for agriculture-related efforts include supporting agritourism, encouraging cross-industry partnerships, example, agriculture with partnerships with retail, grocery stores, hospitality, recreation, collaborating with research partners at the Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission to identify key initiatives to strengthen regional agricultural operations. This is very important. It is very difficult now to develop a market for farms as farms. So when farmers retire, it is quite common for them to sell to developers. And those developers will be speculating that you're at some point, or somebody's going to change their zoning and so on and so forth, to make that land much more valuable than it is right now, as agricultural property. It's very difficult to find that next generation of farmers. Ironically, in studying this intensely in a Cecil County, in other contexts, I find that many young people would love to be farmers, but their families happen not to be farm owners. And that many people who grew up on farms want to get as away from those farms as much as possible. In any case, strengthens those partnerships to maintain that market of farms as farms, so that when a farmer retires and if that family has no interest in taking up a very difficult lifestyle, that, that there is another farmer there who would want to take over that enterprise. Recommendations for tourism efforts include strengthening regional and local coordination, supporting cohesive visitor experiences. So that means, for instance, a community calendar, for instance, to the extent that that does not exist, to make sure that people understand what events are taking place on what days, and people do not fumble over each other by scheduling very important events on the same day. A lot of communities have a tough time with this. I have worked a lot with Washington County, Maryland, to try, because they have, you know, they're major, you know, the Maryland Symphony and many other Baltimore School, oh, sorry, Washington County School for the Arts, so, so, many different kinds of events. And they, they often schedule on the same day, and people can't attend, and it makes everyone, we have the Museum of Fine Arts there, so on and so forth. And expanding placemaking in town centers, we'll talk about town centers.
So, could you expand on that for one second? So you're saying change the, what's in the town center? You're saying have, can you just?
I'm going to talk about that in a moment, the, the town centers, I'm going to go into some depth. That's really, again, for you, as opposed to the economic development. I'll try to get these glasses out anyway. Recommendations for our public outreach include a development of a public awareness campaign, again, this is for Director Ober, uh, and her department. Development of a public awareness campaign to highlight the benefits of economic development. I don't hear a lot of talk about that here, uh, I, I hear a lot of talk about the cost of economic development. We've talked about some of those, uh, whether it's congestion or whatever it happens to be. Uh, including jobs, tax revenue, enhanced local amenities, like restaurants and entrepreneurship generally. Uh, recommendations for alignment with the county comprehensive plan include regularly reviewing the county comprehensive plan for economic development goals and improving coordination through institutional mapping of related county agency efforts. And so there is a comprehensive plan. Uh, and there should be alignment between that plan and the economic development strategy is all we're simply suggesting. In many communities across state, there is no such alignment, everyone's operating in silos. The planners are doing, along with the, the elected officials, the comprehensive plan. Economic development is way over here, just trying to talk to businesses and try to attract businesses, but there's no alignment there. We think alignment is important along those dimensions. So some of the success metrics in terms of economic development, some of the things that you might want to measure her performance by is what we're trying to say. Uh, visitation, new business formation, uh, as measured by total establishments, commercial occupancy in town centers. We think that that was really important, more on that in just a moment. Employment in key industries, including financial services and other high wage industries. Um, let's face it, if you're going to live comfortably in Calver County, you probably need to make a fair amount of money. Certain industries pay more than others, the most um, highly compensated industry is financial services. Those are people who start with money in the, uh, at the beginning of the day and end the day with even more money and then they start the next day. Uh, job openings, you know, are, are the, the, the businesses in this community looking to find more employees, because that's an indication that they're thriving, that they're expanding. Uh, number of farms with net financial gain, ah, one of the issues for farms in recent years, as you know, is they've been losing money. Net income has been falling. Uh, now, part of that doesn't really affect us in Maryland so much, things like corn and soybean prices, those kinds of prices have been low and that's more of an Illinois, Missouri, Kansas kind of thing, but Nebraska, but uh, nonetheless, uh, being a profitable farm operation has become more difficult in America uh, in recent years, farmer market, related to that, farmer's market sales, direct to consumer sales, uh, meaning from farmers uh, to the consumer and then residents, uh, residential building permits issued and average price, oh. See what's happening here? I'm being political. So this is an upscale county. I appreciate that. Uh, it's a wealthy county, I think it wants to stay wealthy, frankly. Uh, but it also has to have some degree of economic dynamism and that requires some level of new housing development and again, permits here are not zero. Um, there's nothing that says that to the extent that housing is developed here, it can't be high priced, high value. When I think about communities that have done this well, I think about Gaithersburg, Maryland, it's a different, I know seventy thousand people, it's a different different community, right? This is, the whole county here is ninety five thousand people, but my point is this, that what they've done in Gaithersburg is they've embraced that new urbanist style, which means homes for owner occupancy. Homes developed, smaller lots relatively close together, but really high amenity communities, neighboring parks, obviously very good schools nearby, so on and so forth. And so even though the square footage is not great in these homes, the values are very high, which means what? You attract a certain type of family. They're often associated with certain occupational categories, whether in healthcare, finance, government, so on and so forth. They pay lots of taxes, they support local retail, including restaurants, it all fits pretty well.
You know what your problem is?
What's my problem?
Because you're gonna put them on a quarter acre lot at best to fit, put that McMansion on there or whatever you need to do. You don't have a place for, for a well in septic and it's going to fail, it's not if, it's when, it's going to fail. You only, to my knowledge and Commissioner Cox definitely the authority there, Losby has some limited water and sewer. Um, Prince Frederick has some, um, I think over in the beaches do. So I hear you and I, and that concept, I, I completely hear you, but you take that ten acres, you gotta have ten thousand square feet, I believe, for water and sewer, so I mean, for, for septic. So when it fails, you know what the state's gonna tell you? Holding tank. Do you know what the value of that house is with a holding tank now? Let's cut it in half. You know how much it's gonna cost them to pump that holding tank every three weeks to five weeks? And that takes us right back to square one. You need property to put that, cause when you're saying a small house, nobody builds a fifteen hundred square foot house anymore. You ain't gonna get a builder to do it, it's gonna be twenty five hundred, three thousand square feet. And to fit that on that lot, on that smaller lot you're talking about, so we did that here. Drum Point Ranch Club in White Sands, we did that. And they were smaller houses and all, and in the very near future, we're going to have a lot of problems in the water and sewer phase. And until Maryland gives us some type of help on what they're willing to deal with or some type of technology or something, somebody a lot smarter than me, right now with what they've got to work with, where are they gonna put that other, that other drain field?
No, Commissioner, I hear you, um, uh, this county has an infrastructure issue with respect to water and sewer right now, as it turns out. It's not, it's not an emerging, it's, it's an emerging problem, it's also an existent problem right now.
Gaithersburg on water and sewer?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Yeah, see?
Yeah, but see Commissioner, that's the thing. Sometimes to develop an economy, you have to make public investments. You have to invest in infrastructure.
But then you know water and sewer gives you, what happens to you with water and sewer?
What happens?
Gets taken advantage of. Because when you're trying to help that workforce housing person, you can't make a builder do it. That's the problem. And so when all of a sudden that builder goes, do I really wanna build twenty houses? Or do I want to do one apartment complex that has three hundred? That I'm going to rent, not even do a rent to own? And now we're right back to where we started. So everybody knows water and sewer helps homes, everybody knows that. But everybody knows when you said we don't want to be Waldorf, look at what they're doing in Waldorf.
Commissioner, I agree, but policymakers have some control over what gets developed.
Very accurate and three, we talk at all time, three, three can rule the day, right?
Yeah, you're not helpless, you're not helpless in the face of developments. Yeah, you can shape what develops, and look, you know, in this state, development opportunities are fairly scarce, as it turns out. You know, my county, Baltimore County, you know, eight hundred fifty thousand people, very little residentially developed, residentially owned land available for development. I mean, they're, you know, they've run out. The only community in central Maryland that really wants uh, more people is Baltimore City, as it turns out, but they can't get out of their own way, you know, two point two four eight per hundred dollars, that's value. Who wants to build in that kind of context without making some tax?
Still one of the highest crime rates and murder capitals.
People want to live in Baltimore City.
Yeah, Baltimore's a dream, right?
Not, not, West Baltimore is not a dream, but they're a part, they're parts of Baltimore, they're not, and, and the Orioles are amazing, but the point is, um, okay, anyway, let me get back to this. So um, some success metrics, uh, we've talked about those. Recommendation, okay, now this is for you as the commission. Uh, recommendations for long-term countywide efforts, and I would say that here I may have gone beyond my mandate because probably some of these considerations extend beyond twenty thirty one, so I'm honest about that, you know, my ostensibly contractually, twenty twenty six to twenty thirty one. But invest in physical infrastructure expansion, especially water and sewer, where you have greatest developable opportunities. Don't fight it. You, it creates tax base, you can govern that to a significant extent. Uh, what gets developed, but you already have failing septic systems, what are you going to do? You need more municipal water and sewer and on top of that, you have a housing shortage, meaning that there's demand to live in this county, meaning that you can monetize that housing shortage into growing tax base. Which by the way, creates again, more people to sit at your restaurants, you know, uh, engage agritourism, so on and so forth. And create the opportunity for entrepreneurs to be here, young people to come back to the community, so on and so forth, and rebalance this county demographically, because it's getting older fast. Um, embrace digital infrastructure development. Uh, and, and many rural, uh, rural like counties, uh, have this kind of issue of broadband speed. So that might sense of this county is really taking care of a lot of those issues. Support the development of expanded and improved housing options, we've been talking about this and that relates, of course, to expanding water and sewer. Invest in public services amenities for current and future residents to find a clear uh, vision for the county's growth. Uh, embrace, embracing digital infrastructure, let me talk a bit more about that. Data centers. Now, there's a, a new opportunity has emerged because today's data centers are agnostic with respect to location. No longer do they need to be in or around Loudoun County, Virginia. So the data centers of today can be various places, but the key is what do you need? Power and water. Power and water, at least county at least has power. Um, and so lots of talk about data centers here as another support for tax base for more uh, uh, formation. Of course, there's some issues there, uh, public infrastructure strain, I put school system pressure there because of course you have more employees that come to these data centers, but I have to say, not that many, data centers are not employee intensive on a per tax dollar uh, generated basis. Um, each million square feet of data center space typically employs only one hundred to a hundred twenty five highly skilled professionals, providing an unmatched tax revenue to employee ratio. So if you think about the county, the county is supposed to break even roughly, but if you think about potential profit centers, data center development would be that. Right? You'd have more tax base than you would have countervailing uh, service implications. With one construction job support for every two hundred seventy five square feet of development, even a modestly sized data center would create substantial employment opportunities, benefiting current residents without requiring permanent population increases. Uh, I won't go through all of this, but one of the analysis we've done, we've done a lot of analysis, uh, in Frederick County and other uh, county contexts regarding, because a lot of people are interested in data centers. A sage analysis, my company of a proposed eight hundred thousand square foot data center development in Calver County estimates the facility would generate approximately five million dollars in annual property tax revenues for the county. Uh, that's uh, fairly significant. Uh, conclusions. Uh, these strategies can make Calver County more attractive to young families, entrepreneurs and visitors, fostering economic and demographic balance, while significantly expanding both the residential and commercial tax base. I was very surprised to hear that Dunkirk is, Dunkirk Town Center is not a public water and sewer. Um, I don't know why that would be.
People don't want it.
Cause you're not elected.
Ah, because I'm not elected, I, well, I didn't know, because I, you know, the, again, I've said it, you know, the town center concept is very appealing, how the town centers have been managed is not as appealing. And if you're going to embrace more economic development, it's gonna be in the town centers. But the town centers have to be empowered to embrace that development, you need water and sewer in Dunkirk. That would be one of my recommendations.
Look, I would love to be able to help those people in case something happened, because I, I worry about that all the time when I look at the square footage and these folks have got so much in this. But you cannot regulate good behavior and you cannot regulate greed. So if you could find some type of state policy that would hold up in the court of law that says a guy can't come in and exploit that? And those folks up there have known that long before I've been in the game, the Dunkirk residents, they knew, they saw it. They watched those communities that they lived in be safe and walkable. And I mean, right now, talk to the sheriff's office about a lot of the problems that we have. Right up soon as they come across here and I, and I, and I'm not trying to sound negative here, but I'm telling you.
It's a fact.
Yeah, you cannot regulate behavior. And I worry about those folks as I do my folks down there on the tiny lots and the smaller houses, water and sewer is an issue. But we're gonna have to come up with something better than just where we open up the floodgates and now somebody can put three hundred units on a couple acres.
I'm not talking about that, though.
But that's what, but that's what they'll do.
You've got failing septic systems right now, you have to do something, don't you, Commissioner?
Correct.
So there, and you've said, we, you, 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 well, it's been said in the county at least, you may not have said it, you've got seven town centers. You've said you've embraced this community, the town center concept, that that's where you want the bulk of new development to be, that's where the activity is, that's where your entrepreneur will be. Right? That restaurateur, that amenity provider, where else are you gonna do it? I mean, you, you can say to me, Anibal, look, a- all we need to do is this. Uh, let people work in and around the county, if they want to go to a nice restaurant, they can go to Annapolis and they'll just come back here to sleep at night. And we'll pay our tax bills with uh, at the LNG terminal and new data centers and the nuclear reactors, maybe we'll get another reactor or two, we'll see. Maybe small scale to support a data center development, we're good, we can pay our bills, we're fine, we don't need, you know, the, potentially, that's true. Let's say that that's correct, that financially, that renders the county viable. Uh, that kind of approach. It would make the, also the county, I think, less interesting. Um, it would make the county less appealing from a quality of life perspective. And what you left with at the end of the day, you've got private owners with failing septic systems. You still got a problem and I don't think the state of Maryland is gonna bail you out anytime soon.
They're not, they're not.
They don't have the money for it, I don't think they have the interest in it.
We have always been very prominent on living within our means and being very fiscally conservative. We don't have some of the things that other places have, I wish we did, but all those come with price tags. So there, there's a balancing act, correct? And when you start adding all this population, remember every, you, you put one apartment, you put two cars on the road. So think about that, you know, you put a house, you put two cars, potentially three cars on the road. You still haven't addressed route four, you haven't addressed your, your, your schools, EMTs, police, all that, I mean, we're now becoming paid EMTs because we were volunteers for so long, we've had to add a lot of paid EMTs, which is an expense, so I hear you.
And those apartments don't generate enough revenue to cover their cost.
I'm not suggesting to you, I've not recommended at any moment, Mr. Chair, even one new apartment unit be added.
But to Commissioner Hart's point, the residents in Dunkirk that came from Rich George's County understand when you put water sewer in place, what that brings with it and that brings apartments.
Well, I mean, again, it
As a county official, looking at revenue, it's very hard for me to support more apartments that I know lose money every day. And the citizens of this county greatly appreciate their quality of life. And you've done a very good job in your report of expressing the situation that we five sit in. Where residents don't want to see one more car on the road. Director Ober has the worst job in county government because they don't want to see any economic development. Because that brings more cars on the road. But, and they want more amenities, but they don't want to pay a penny more in taxes. So we are very blessed to have the Calvert Cliff Snooker Power Plant and the LNG facility. And if we're lucky, if the state will get out of our way, maybe a data center that will generate some revenue. But that's the box we five sit in. And uh, I feel sorry for Director Ober because it's very hard to bring in business when the community really is not supportive of water and sewer and more traffic.
You did say, go ahead, sorry.
And I understand the point up there to Dunkirk or the failing systems. But that system in Dunkirk is gonna cost us forty five million dollars. So do we fix it under failing systems or do we fix it under apartments? And you just got that sense of there, so we're caught in between the two of trying to repair what we have and plan for new, so forty five million is just not a
Let it be condominiums, I mean, I'm, I'm not suggesting what housing type we're talking about. I, well, the reason I say, Madam Commissioner, condominiums is those are owner occupied.
I live in Dunkirk.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I mean, whatever happens to me, no, I underst, look.
And we're very organized.
What I'm hearing, yes, no, I, I appreciate that and there's a reason why you do not have municipal water and sewer, because you've been organized against it. What I'm suggesting to you is, on the one hand, if you say as a community, we have embraced the town center concept, but you really don't, is all I'm pointing out to you.
No.
The obvious inconsistency, it's impossible to reconcile that.
I don't think we wanted it anyway, it was pushed on us, wasn't it?
So, and that concept was adopted a long time ago to generate growth in small areas to protect the rural nature of the rest of the county. And it has worked to that degree, that most of our businesses are in the town centers. So the concept, I, I would disagree that, I believe the concept has worked to a point. But I think people are at a point now where they don't want to see any more. Uh, and I would argue that, you know, we do have higher home values here. But if you look at southern Maryland, we're not that far off from St. Mary's and Charles. We're all in around the five fifty range for average home sales. So we are lucky that we have a very high median income, but our home sales are not that much out of line with our neighbors in other counties. And so, and as Commissioner Cox pointed out, we've provided incentives for builders to build senior housing, affordable housing, whatever affordable means. Uh, but they can make more money on a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar house than they can build in a two hundred thousand dollar house. And the demand is there for those houses, so until there's no demand for a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar house, they're gonna keep building them. And so we've tried to do, this board has slashed density trying to stop high-density projects in response to the citizens' request. Because as you know, you know, you put regulations in place, it takes time for those regulations to really come to fruition. So I got elected two terms ago because that board was incentivizing high development and the people didn't like it. That's why I'm sitting here. So we've done what we can to stop that. Even though there are projects coming that were done under old regulations that we can't stop. Uh, we still get blamed for those, but that's okay. But we're in a tough box here, as you've pointed out in your presentation today. Uh, we're trying to respond to the citizens that elected us to uh, put forth what they want to see Calver County look like. Some of them may not quite envision what the physical impact of that is. Some of them may not quite envision what the physical impact of that is, because it's not free, and it doesn't come cheap. There's a cost. And, you know, we raised taxes two years ago, we got slammed for that. But if you don't want to see growth, we have to have revenue to provide services. And that, you've pointed that out in your plan. If we don't entice more economic development, the only thing we can do more forward is raise taxes to cover costs. That's the situation we're in.
Right, Mr. Chair. No, I'm glad we've had this conversation, that's fine. You know, what I wanted to explore is that there are some options here that you need to consider. I will tell you that, yes, water and sewer is expensive. Providing services to new residents is expensive. But also demographic deterioration and physical deterioration is also very expensive, whether it's, we're talking about septic systems or just the aging population that's increasingly moving towards fixed incomes. That can also make economic life more difficult. So there's an expense to that, too. So concluding.
May I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah, please.
I don't know, I know we can do it, but I'd like to see this, us to put this report out there so it's available to the citizenry. And for me personally, I know what I ran on. And my job is to work for the citizens of Calvert County. So if Dunkirk doesn't want water and sewer until they're convinced, I work for them. And like Commissioner Hand said, we are in a bad position because we have the background information as to the failures, as to what possibly could happen, what we're looking at. But until the citizenry instructs us to take a different avenue, all we can do is educate them.
Fair enough, Madam Commissioner. I would say that there are people associated with Dunkirk who actually have a different view. And these are business people. These are the people who actually want to make payroll and expand their enterprise and so on and so forth, and don't want to have to think about what life might be like in Anaronda County.
Sure.
So, so yes, I understand the, maybe the bulk, and I, look, you're elected, this is a democracy. I've said it already, the community has a right to determine its own fate, its own future. I'm simply pointing out to some of those stakeholders that future may not, a future that invites in stagnation and ongoing physical deterioration may not be the brightest future. And one should at least consider available options. So with that, a goal is to position Calvert County for broad-based prosperity while preserving its rural heritage. And, you know, I said next Q and A and discussion, but we've had plenty of that already. But I'm happy to take whatever questions or comments you have in our remaining time together.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I've got one last question. So you did the study in Oxford, did they lower their services to their citizens with what they did?
No, they don't, because they're very, very affluent. And so at that time, which is about fifteen years ago, there are no real short-term issues for them. I mean, it's Talbot County, it's an affluent county, Oxford is a particularly affluent oasis within Talbot County. But as I pointed out to them, you're not going to live forever. Who's going to move in here next? Who's going to provide your services? Who maintains your lawns and so on and so forth? And will the next generation be able to afford those people and maintain these grand homes and so on? That was the question, you know, is this, is this something that's viable in the long term? This kind of do nothing, allow nothing strategy? That was the question, and they told me, you know, drive back safely to Baltimore. And so that's fine, that's fine, but we had the discussion.
Well, and like I said, Calvert County has a high standard for, you know, public safety and.
I've heard that this morning.
And so that's where we're at with the.
Yes, sir, Commissioner, thank you.
But we appreciate the report, because it does back up some of the things we say quietly. You know, we feel for those individuals in Dunkirk and residential homes that are on pumpouts. You know, we have lots of older communities that were built in areas that should have been served by water and sewer, that, you know, it's highly expensive to bring them on water and sewer now to fix those issues. But the community as a whole today does not support that. And there is an election coming up in, what, how many months, Commissioner Hart?
Like about nine?
Yeah. And so if we started talking about sewer in Dunkirk, there'll be five new people sitting in these chairs.
They'll bring us the box to put our desk in.
Well, I get to say such things because I get to drive back to Baltimore, but I appreciate that.
I will never do it unless who elected me tells me to do it. That's, my job is to work for these people.
Understood, Madam Commissioner, thank you.
And it's the expense of that infrastructure, as you've talked about in your report. You know, there's a proposed bypass to help alleviate the traffic through Prince Frederick. The loop on the east side of Prince Frederick, I think the last estimate I was forty-five million dollars for that little narrow loop. To fix the traffic light here at the hospital, which you drove up to, is the last phase of MDOT's improvement for Prince Frederick. What did they tell us? That's like seventy million dollars. They won't do it. So we keep getting hearing about the backup at the light, and nobody's got the money to fix it. And so that initiates this conversation. We don't want one more car in Calvert County. Even though we have a bridge and people from St. Mary's drive through here every single day. Doesn't matter what we do, they don't want one more car on this road. And so, you know, we're trying to respect their request, and maybe we're not forward-thinking enough and we're weak, but.
No, we're not weak. We need to get something like this on the website and educate people. We're not weak at all, we're, it takes strength to do what you have been asked to do for the citizenry.
And it's, you know, it's very important to see this perspective as well. I have a lot of comments, but I'm going to wait until the end of the meeting and I'll share mine. We have a lot of people waiting, so.
And if I could just add, if people go to choosecalvert.com and do a search in there for strategic plan, this is all on our website right now.
Wonderful, thank you.
But we thank you.
We thank, I thank you.
Thank you so much. It's a great report, it's very informative, thank you very much.
So this morning, we have a couple of ceremonies on the agenda, and before I get into the first one, I do want to recognize Cynthia Harris. She had to leave.
She will be back at the end of the meeting.
Okay, we'll do that later then, sorry. So at this time, we're going to swear in, as most of you know, our treasurer resigned back in May. The governor went through his process and has appointed a new county treasurer to fill out the term until the next election. So at this time, we'd like to ask Amanda Delaney to come forward, and Kathy Smith is here, clerk of the court, to do the swearing in.
So I'm going to have you raise your right hand, and you're going to repeat after me, and you're going to start by saying aye and state your name.
Aye, Amanda Delena.
Do promise or declare?
Do promise or declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of treasurer for Calvert County?
Of treasurer for Calvert County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state?
And laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Why don't we take a picture with that real quick?
So Katie, will you give her the mic? She might want to say something.
Yep, of course. There you go.
Well, if it's okay, I'll speak first. So I didn't really have anything planned, so forgive me if it's short, but I am so excited to be here and to use this time in my life to work with the people in Calvert County and truly serve them. When this opportunity came up for me, I was just so excited. You know, I'm an accountant, I'm a CPA, and not, you know, not all of us are meant to do everything. And so for me to be able to use the skill set that I've developed in my career to give back to the public is just really, really exciting, and I cannot wait to see what, you know, happens in the treasurer's office over the next year and a half that I'm here. And I look forward to seeing you all on the campaign trail next year.
Welcome to Calvert County.
Thank you so much.
So the next item on the agenda is we're going to swear in some new deputy sheriffs. Actually, they were sworn in last week, I'm sorry. Sheriff, you want to come forward and introduce your new deputies?
Yeah, put them on the street.
Morning, mistress.
Morning.
I'm here this morning. I just want to take this opportunity to introduce our new deputies that are joining us and keeping our county safe and also making us the safest county in the state, so we're going to continue that. Mr. Logan Armbruster comes back from South Carolina. His family is from Calvert County, they moved up here to have more family available to them. But he has eight years of service, and he comes to us, and we're excited to have him on the streets, experienced officer, so. Logan Armbruster, you want to say a few words?
Good morning, everybody. I'm very grateful to be here. Like Sheriff Cox said, I'm new to Calvert County. My in-laws are from here, so I'm a transplant, but I've heard nothing but great things. I'm looking forward to getting out in the community and helping keep the reputation that it has, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity, so thank you for having me.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Come on up front.
Next, we have Connor Curry. He graduated from high school, Huntington High School, Division One swimmer. So we have a lot of water around us, so he'd be doing all the water rescues, so. Athlete, awesome kid, excited to have him as well, know his family, and he's going to do us good, make us proud. So Connor had the PT Award at their academy graduation, so they went to our academy, Southern Maryland Criminal Justice Academy, and Logan got the all-around deputy graduating from that academy, so they made us proud and represented us well.
Good job.
Yeah, good job.
Hello, hello, I'm Deputy Connor Curry, so grew up here, basically. It's a great county, love the people in it. Thank you again for having me here today. I'm excited to defend the entire county and protect everybody in it, too. So, yep, thank you again for having me, and good to see you, I'll hopefully see you around.
Yeah, good.
Welcome, welcome.
Fun fact about Logan, his father is a retired Secret Service agent, so he lived in our county his whole entire life as well, so. John McIntosh comes to us from PG County, deputy, brings us nine years of service. And I like that experience on our street for our younger deputies and help them grow. And he's going to do us, make us proud and do us well. And he's related to Mr. Banyas, that's his father-in-law, which is a local legend of our county. And my favorite teacher coming up in school was him, so I had to say that. But Mr. McIntosh is going to do us well, and we're excited to have him as well.
Good afternoon, appreciate you all having us here today. Got some great experience up the road there. I've been here for over thirty years, grew up here, went to school here. Mr. Banyas was actually my teacher as well, and I married his daughter, so. But got some great experience up there, and I'm so happy and excited that I get the opportunity to take that experience and bring it here where it's important, where we all live. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, welcome.
Yeah, Commissioner, they're filling some holes we had with retirements and also some people that left us for other positions, so. We're lucky to have them, and they're going to do us good. Thank you.
All right, come on up for a picture.
Step to your left, please. Krishna Hands, can you take a step to your left as well, please? And Krishna Ireland, a half step to your left, your other left?
Mother left?
We're going to the fourth, I'm sorry. Thank you all for your patience, three, two, one. Thanks so much, congratulations, guys.
So that brings us to our first public hearing. Department of Parks and Recreation, Howling Point Park Master Plan. Director Brandon? Or not? Morning, ladies.
Good morning, commissioners. Back here to talk about Howling Point again. I'm Stephanie Spurling, I'm the park planner with Parks and Recreation.
Good morning, Amanda Stillwagon, Park and Safety Division Chief.
So there are three public hearings scheduled for today. All hearings were duly advertised, and the certificate of publication is made part of the record of each hearing. Citizens are invited to provide comment on any or all of the hearings after each presentation has concluded. Each of the three hearings will have a separate comment period followed by a brief presentation. Anyone here in person must sign in on the sheet next to the attorney to speak. This first public hearing is for the purpose of considering and receiving comments regarding the adoption of the Howling Point Park Master Plan. And I'll read the memo. So the background. Howling Point Park, located at four seven five five Howling Point Road in Prince Frederick, Maryland, is an eighty-one acre park in Calvert County featuring athletic fields, walking paths, a playground, a basketball court, tennis courts, and pickleball courts. There's also a pavilion available for rental by the community. The most recent master plan was developed in nineteen ninety-eight and an update as needed to guide park improvements and growth over the next fifteen to twenty years. Discussion. In fall of twenty twenty-three, the Department of Parks and Recreation began updating the Howling Point Park Master Plan, gathering public input and working with Murphy and Dittenhofer Architects. The draft was completed in September of twenty twenty-four, proposing improvements such as paved natural trails, synthetic turf fields, upgraded ball fields, better signage, and a new skate park. The Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners' work sessions were held in October of twenty twenty-four. The plan was deemed consistent with the county comprehensive plan. Then in October, I'm sorry, in February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission directed staff to circulate the draft and schedule a public hearing. The plan was sent to neighboring jurisdictions and county staff, and feedback was received from four state agencies, two county commissions, and four community members via email. On May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to close the record and recommended adoption by the Board of County Commissioners. record and recommended adoption by the Board of County Commissioners. Fiscal impact. Funds to update the Howland Point Park Master Plan were previously procured, and cost estimates for all proposed upgrades and additions are provided as of the document. And our conclusion and recommendations. The staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners hold a public hearing on the updated Howland Point Park Master Plan, and that the public record remain open for 10 days following the hearing. In accordance with Local Government Article Section 9-105, any action by the board to update, I'm sorry, to adopt the updated master plan must be deferred until at least 10 days after the hearing. Do you have any comments before I start with the presentation?
So when was Howland Point Park opened?
Initially?
Yeah, I can't remember. Just trying to remember.
Eighties? I can't answer that.
Well, I played there as a little kid. Although that gets to nineties, right?
All right, sure, sure.
Yeah, we played little league football there.
Yeah, I was just trying to think. I can't remember.
Seventy-eight-ish?
I'm not sure.
That's very possible.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Brannam, Director of Parks and Recreation. In our research, we found that the naming rights to the park happened in 1976. So Commissioner, I'm not sure that you were actually playing Little League. That was a little after Little League.
Yeah, that was way before me. So.
So don't have the exact information on the inception, but the naming, because there was actually a public request, and we found the article, one of the team actually found the article and presented it to me, that a lady actually was awarded a black and white TV for coming up with the name of Howland Point Park, please.
That was big time back then.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So what came first, the road name or the park name?
The area.
I mean, if she named it after the road, and she wanted TV for that, I'm just saying.
The road was named first. So how many times have we updated the master plan since then? Do you know that?
This will be number two.
The second time?
Yes. So we have.
So just get a perspective of how often this happens for people that are watching.
Yes, that's right. To my understanding, there was one master plan that was adopted and that was created in the late 90s. And so now we're updating that.
Right, because the original park was not as big as it is today.
That's correct.
It's been expanded since then.
Yes, that's correct. And we do lease part of it. And I'll show you that in my presentation. I'll go ahead and get started. So as we mentioned, the park you can see is located in the central part of the county, just north of 231, close to, not too far from the Patuxet River. And so here are the map of the existing amenities in the park. And as you alluded to, we now manage more of the park than we actually own. So you can see that the section that's highlighted in green, that's the property that's owned by the B O C C. And that's also the only part of this master plan that was considered, I'm sorry, that was considered for the master plan. The other section of the park that's sort of grayed out, but you can see sort of encircled in red, is leased by the B O C C. So we have a, and maybe Director Brannam can speak more to the ins and outs of the lease if you're interested, but it's a lease that we pay yearly to the Hall family. And while we do, we've developed it to a certain degree, the decision was made not to include it as part of the master plan study since we don't own it. But our existing amenities, you can see, include, you know, a whole series of baseball fields, we have multipurpose fields, tennis courts, and then we just put in the new pickleball courts. And as, and one thing I will talk about in the presentation is also we have a few historic barns. So those encircle our existing playground. So the timeline, as I sort of talked about in the memo, we contracted Murphy and Dittenhofer in 2023 to start this process for us, to write the, to write the master plan. We solicited input from, in a survey, in fall of '23, we had over 2,000 people who responded to the survey. And based on that, Murphy and Dittenhofer, along, you know, with CCPR, we completed the draft plan by September of '24. And here's a map of the proposed improvements. So, you know, what we're, we are proposing to convert a few of the fields in the northwest corner to synthetic turf, based on, you know, a lot of feedback we've gotten from residents with strong desire for synthetic turf. It's debatable, but it's a very hotly contested issue, let's put it that way. But there is a lot of desire from sports parents to have synthetic turf. We're pretty much the only jurisdiction in the region without a publicly accessible synthetic turf field currently. In addition to that, we've also proposed to put in synthetic turf outfield's in the, what, the entire, I know you want to say something.
No, I mean, I think it's just important to say that these are all just proposed. This master plan isn't saying that we're converting one particular field to synthetic over another. We just highlighted a rectangular field. We highlighted a baseball field to show that they could convert to synthetic. Because we did get some of those questions at the Planning Commission where folks thought maybe we were talking about this particular field. It's merely a recommendation. We're not saying that we have to. It's just what is proposed in it. So as Stephanie was saying, we do have the rectangular fields in the back, like Field 11, we use it for football. Seven, eight, nine is all soccer. And then we have one of our baseball fields that we highlighted that could be converted to synthetic as well.
What's it cost to convert a baseball field? All we've ever talked about is football fields.
It's going to be, it's going to be a little bit more because you have to look at the infield as well. Yeah. The, all of the costs, I don't want to misquote because I don't have it off the top of my head, but there is a cost estimate attached with this. And so they broke it out, depending on if we were to convert a larger, like 90-foot diamond, or we were to take one of the smaller fields and convert it. Now luckily, all of those fields are lit, so we don't have to worry about any of those additional costs, and it would just be basically a replacement in kind. We're not creating the wheel. We're just removing what is there and replacing.
Commissioner, hands this question. I mean, I, look, I always have understood the value of having turf because of the maintenance, and if it rains, it doesn't matter. But in the short term, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe every baseball infield we have is dirt because it's multi-play. You can do softball and that. But I've always asked, was there a way to try to get at least grass on some of that? I mean, doesn't that be turf maybe up front?
Well, we do have some that are grass in.
Do we have some grass in fields?
Yeah, so any of our 90-foot diamonds are. So for example, Field Three, the lower one at Ward Park, that has an all grass infield.
Okay, see, I haven't been to that one. Okay, okay. Because I'm trying to remember, where else do we have grass, do you recall?
So any of the places that we have the 90-foots, then we maintain it with the grass infield. It is tougher. I mean, Ward, I would say, is one of our most beautiful. But regardless, if we have a built mound, you can't convert it. So like when we redid the fields at Dunkirk, what we did is we didn't put turf in the infield, and those are multi-use fields. So we can run those as softball, adult baseball, we can run.
And I know that's been the trick because you need the shortage of fields. And then if you, you know, but I have always wondered if there was anything in the future to try to get a few more.
The problem is the irrigation. We don't always have the irrigation on the field. We're like, at Ward, with such a new park, we did. So we're able to irrigate that infield. When we renovated the fields at Dunkirk, we did put turf on the perimeters, so down the first baseline, down the third baseline, behind the backstop. And it looks great. We went through a little bit of a drought last summer, which was very tough. So we had to replace some of that sod. I didn't know it was going to be a drought all summer last summer when we put that in.
Darn.
Yes. So we did put down some new sod in the fall. It looks pretty good this year. We're doing much better than we were last year, but it has done nothing but rain.
So is there irrigation in the master plan for Howland Point?
There. Well, it would depend. So on the synthetic, we wouldn't have to. Now, some of the fields, we already have it on. So like seven, eight, nine at Howland, that's currently Bermuda. If we converted that to synthetic, and let's say we wanted to keep the water cannons on it for cooling, we'd already have it. We already have water there.
Just to summarize the other improvements, you know, we talked about putting in an additional playground and a whole sort of pavilion grove just to the south of the multipurpose fields on the west side of the park. And adding a skate park based on, you know, a community desire for that. In addition to, and I should point out that the one thing that people wanted nearly more than anything else were paved walking paths and, and natural walking paths. And the one section of the park that we have to do that is down there in the southeast corner, which is just wooded now. So we were here in October of 2024, and at the Planning Commission, we had no public comment. Then in February, the Planning Commission directed us to send the draft plan to agencies for a 60-day review period. I sent it to 13 jurisdictions, 18 Calver County government staff members who serve it as department heads or chairs of boards and commissions. And we received comments from four agencies, four state agencies, and Maryland Historical Trust, the Department of Environment, Department of Natural Resources, and the Department of Planning. And locally, the Historic District Commission and the Environmental Commission responded. In addition to, we received emails from four community members. And I should just say that, just go back to this, most of the comments that we got from Department of Environment, DNR, Planning, they were pretty pro forma. It was sort of like, we support what you're doing, or, you know, make sure that you consider, you know, safe lighting, or, you know, improve your signage. These are all things that we've, you know, added that already in the, that already exist in the master plan. But the Maryland Historical Trust and the Calver County Historic District Commission gave some pretty extensive comments. And they were really focused on the barns, the historic barns that are on the property, because we did not address those. We did not add those, discuss them at all in the master plan. This is what the MHT had to say, you know, Maryland's tobacco barns are a vanishing cultural resource, important to the development and history of the state. So please include descriptions, and then also what you want to do with them, and what you will do with them. And the Calver County Historic District Commission kind of echoed that sentiment. They, you know, talked about the two historic tobacco barns that are still existing. There was a third one that was there previously. It was burned by the fire department during COVID. And they also were concerned about if we put in walking trails and that undeveloped portion, that it's sort of a promontory up there, and that there could be archaeological resources in that area. So here are just a picture of the two historic barns. This view doesn't quite exist anymore because between me and the barns is currently the pickleball courts. But I like the picture because it just sort of gives you a sense of what the two barns look like flanking the playground there. And then here are some historic pictures of the barns. The one, the older one is probably from the mid-19th century, could be as early as like 1850 or so, the core of it, with some alterations. And it's potentially eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The other barn that's existing was probably built around 1950 or so. And this is just a map that the Historic Preservation Planner made for me to put into the, into the report. And on it, you can see that there are also several, like, historic road traces that run through the property. In addition to, you can see the barns. There's a possible house site where the maintenance shop is now, so that's probably blitzed. But it does sort of, you know, raise the point that there could be some kind of archaeological resources, especially on that hilltop there. So then in May 21st, we went back to the Planning Commission. We told them all of our comments. They found it consistent with the Calver County Comprehensive Plan, and we made the edits that they suggested, including adding discussion about the historic properties, I'm sorry, the historic structures. And it is now uploaded to the county website. And so that is where we are today.
Thank you.
Are there any comments, questions?
Questions, comments?
That's great.
Anybody signed up?
Mr. President, there's no one in the room that has signed up. There was, and I believe there still is, one person who's joined virtually, even though that's not been advertised as an option for the hearing. So I'll ask if they wish to provide comment at this public hearing to raise, use the raise your hand function. And they have not, so there are no speakers.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we close the record.
Hi, motion. I'm thinking that we close the record. Or is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
That was, I just want to comment. That was a very concise, good presentation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Sharon. Appreciate that.
Our next public hearing is for Department of Community Resources Health Department Core Funding Budget Amendment. Director Moreland?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. And I have with me Deputy Director for the Health Department, Champ Thomas Scuddie. And I'm just going to read the memo here. This is for the Health Department Core Funding Budget Adjustment. Background in each county in Maryland has a unique match requirement for core funding allocated to their health departments, a mandate that has been legislatively in place since 1995. Maryland Annotated Code Health General 2-304 outlines the activities or programs that qualify for core funds. Discussion on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, the county received the state's annual core agreement requesting a total match of $6,460,620, county match. Fiscal impact to meet the local match, a budget amendment is required to move $777,401 from prior year fund balance to Calver County's Health Department General Fund Account. Conclusion, on behalf, recommendation, on behalf of the Health Department, Department of Community Resources requests the Board of County Commissioners conduct a public hearing, close the record, approve budget amendment, BA- dash, I'm sorry, BA 2026-0000, and approve and enact the resolution and have the board president sign the core agreement with the state of Maryland. Coordination was with Office of the County Attorney, Department of Finance and Budget, and the Calver County Health Department. And we did, are following the guidelines for conduct in public hearing as detailed in Resolution 6-89. The hearing has been duly advertised and two papers of general circulation for two weeks. And the speakers, a sign-in sheet has been provided for speakers and is located on the podium to the left behind me. Do you have any speakers?
Again, no one has signed up in person. If the individual online wishes to speak, please use the raise your hand function. And the hand is raised. Please identify yourself, whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group. You may need to unmute yourself. And you're still muted.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Joseph Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself today. For the public benefit, the budget thresholds of approval were established in Resolution 29, updated in 2023. A finance director can update, or can approve up to $25,000, the county administrator $25,000 to $50,000. The B O C C can put it on their consent agenda from $50,000 to $149,000, and the resolution publication, public hearing for anything over $150,000. I think it'd be helpful if these budget adjustments were listed on the county website somewhere with a little bit more background so the public can better track how the approved budget has shifted throughout the year. Obviously, I'm in favor of fulfilling the matching $777,000 to meet the $6.4 million core funding from the Health Department. But was this $6.5 million match based on the same wealth calculation as our school funding? Was it affected by the pilot expiration and the subsequent renegotiation with Berkshire Hathaway's $8 million LNG plant? Instead of seeking more tax breaks opportunities from the legislature in Mako for data centers, maybe focus on legislation that would get these numbers to the Health Department before our budget needs to be approved, so we don't have to do a budget adjustment a month after it's been approved. But again, I appreciate everything the Health Department's doing and supporting our community through vaccinations, health screenings, and other things. So thank you for your time.
That is the only speaker.
Thank you. Yeah, presentation?
We did not have any public comments that came via email, so I did want for you to know the investments that were going to be taking place as a result of this funding. If you want to elaborate on those, Champ?
Stepping back a bit, you're aware we've already experienced some federal cuts in our normal budget. They happen to be within areas that are normally covered by core funding, areas of infectious disease, maternal-child health, as well as tobacco outreach. So while our intent primarily is to use these dollars to bolster our nursing staff, some of these legacy positions are being supported by these as well. Additionally, we're using these dollars to fill an open epidemiologist position. We have one part-time position, but we've been functioning with 1.5 FTEs for roughly the last five years. It's a position that has a lot of turnover. So we'd like to have the part-time person who's a local resident and has established roots in the community and is our continuity plan during periods of transition. We've used that over, this will be our fourth transition since the 1.5 FTE has been in place. We've never had a public information officer. We've never had a public information officer, and that's going to be one of the strategies we use to better coordinate or reduce some of the burden that we're leaning onto the county's CMR team. That'll be part of the use, a few community health workers to expand the reach of some of our outreach programs. And our public health emergency preparedness nurse is also included in where these dollars will go. It's fluid, while we'll retain the structure of the core funding understanding as we get more insight onto further grants that will be cut from the federal government, some of these intentions may shift back to just stabilizing existing projects.
So Champ, you know, just for people listening, you want to just, for a couple minutes, go into core funding and non-core funding, like, what's on the non-core funding, safe harbor, and et cetera?
So I'll step, one step further back. Our annual operating budget's roughly 25, almost $26 million. 55% of that is grant dollars, and those grants are a mix of federal dollars that pass to the state government and actual state funding. Core funding is something that's been defined by the legislature. It's a partnership with state government and local jurisdictions. There's a relatively complex formula that was developed in the early 90s for how that share takes place. I'll be blunt, Calvert's share is higher than most other counties. But, so, core funding meets those critical service areas, public health communication, infrastructure, administrative cost, infectious disease, environmental health. A lot of our nursing areas are covered by that, physical infrastructure, so it's sort of a minimal services to provide. It doesn't include behavioral health services. And over time, we've noticed how those have become, there's an intersection between effective behavioral health and intervention and promotion, and how we provide other services and how we support the community. But those services are not included in core funding.
So this is a grant from the state, right?
Core, well, it's not really a grant, it's their allocation.
Oh, it's just normal funding.
Yep, yep, this is their state allocation, and they're 33%, and we're 66%.
So this is an increase of $640,000 in...
$770,000, yep, yep.
Sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
I'm looking at different numbers.
Yeah.
So why wasn't this included in our regular budget process?
I can comment on that. We didn't receive the notice from the state till after the public hearing had already been sent to the papers for the budget, so.
So the caller was trying to identify issues that could have caused why this wasn't done on a normal budget, and that's because we just found out about it, right, after our budget process was done?
That's correct. And that's been a consistent challenge that you face as you do your due diligence, and we face as we plan each year. We tend to get our core funding allocation towards the end of the fiscal year, and in case, in one year, it was after the new fiscal year started.
And that happens a lot, where we get allocations that change over, we don't know them during our regular budget cycle, or we get a grant we didn't know we were going to get, so we have to go through and make a budget amendment, so just want to clarify that.
And when we were approving our budget that day, it was stated that we did not have the cost from the Health Department, and nor did we have the figures from the BOE when we were approving our budget, so that was out there.
Yep.
The public hearing also was on the website with information about this funding, so, because we do that with all of our public hearings, so just making that point as well.
Did you say that we in Calvert County pay a little bit more for the Health Department?
I didn't mean to open up a can of worms, but our ratio's a little bit higher.
Why's that?
No one can explain it. It's a legacy calculation that literally started back in the early 90s. It was implemented as core funding went into place. There's a, it's claimed to be complex, and I don't mean to sound dismissive, but no one's been able to clearly enunciate how the numbers work. If you look at it, you can maybe reverse engineer property taxes, local income, population, but where we live now, Calvert pays a slightly higher proportion of match than most of the other jurisdictions. We're not the highest. I believe Worcester is the highest by proportion, and Montgomery may be the second, but we're roughly two county dollars for every state dollar. Now, just to clarify, that's about a quarter of our overall operating budget between the two. The vast majority of our funding is from competitive grants.
And not to make that can of worms any bigger than it already is, but if the state comes along and gives you another million dollars, we're required by law to match it?
Yes.
I parse that just a little bit, depending on what the $1 million is. There are certain state dollars, even if they're block allocated, that would not qualify for this. But yes, in general, if they increase our funding, there's an expectation that the local jurisdictions would reciprocate with what their match is. And I'm thinking of fiscal year '24, the announcement was so late that no one could plan it. And practically speaking, it was an unfair position to put the county in, and the state eventually accommodated an amendment to that expectation, and they did that for two years. And we're trying to get back on the expected cycle now.
Right? Yes, sir.
I move that we close the record and adopt and enact a resolution approving budget amendment BA 2026-00001, and authorize the board president sign the core agreement with the state of Maryland.
Second. I have a motion, the second, is there any discussion on that motion?
None.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for my question.
Thank you.
Our third and final public hearing is Department of Community Resources Reinvestment and Repair Fund Ordinance. Director Moreland.
Thank you. As background, as part of Maryland's legalization of adult-use cannabis, voters approved a law in 2022 establishing the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, CRRF. This fund dedicates a portion of cannabis sales revenue to communities that were disproportionately impacted by past cannabis prohibition and enforcement policies. In accordance with the Maryland Senate Bill 894 passed this year and enacted as Chapter 195 laws of Maryland, the county is required to establish a local CRRF fund that will support community-based initiatives that benefit low-income communities and serve disproportionately impacted areas. The legislation outlines specific requirements and eligible and ineligible uses that are included in the ordinance. Fiscal impact: The county has received a total of $941,949.61 from the Comptroller's Office with payments to date as follows for calendar year 2023, $477,451.92, and for calendar year 24, $464,497.69. Staff, conclusion, recommendation: Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners conduct the required public hearing, close the record, sign the ordinance enacting the process for administering, ministering the Calvert County Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, and direct the Department of Community Resources Director to serve as designated in managing the funds. This was coordinated with the Office of the County Attorney and Department of Finance and Budget. This hearing has also been duly advertised in two papers of general circulation for two weeks, and a sign-in sheet has been provided at the podium.
And no one has signed in, and if the individual online wishes to speak, please use the raise your hand function. And you may unmute yourself, identify yourself, and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Joe Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself again. I'm just a little, I haven't been able to find a lot of good information about define what is a disproportionate area or a low-income area. I know for other grants, that little sliver right along Howling Point Park, the Barstow Elementary area, was the only low-income area that qualified for the enough grant, so I just wanted to know if there's, you know, specific areas in the county where this is going to be dedicated toward, and what we plan on using it for, is I don't get it from what's been presented so far. Thank you so much.
We did not receive any other comments via email, but there is a survey out right now to get feedback from the two eligible communities. The Office of Social Equity oversees this process, and they have given us a data piece that was collected over time that shows Lesby was a disparately impacted community, based on, thank you, based on the data that they put together. And then he is, the speaker was correct in stating that Prince Frederick was designated as a low-income community under the Enough Act. It is a portion of Prince Frederick, but the Office of Social Equity has allowed us to include Prince Frederick as a whole. So those are the two communities that we've done outreach to via the survey that's up right now. You can find links at the county's social media page, as well as the Department of Community Resources' social media page to that, and we've been doing outreach in the community to let people know about that survey. We can extend it if we don't get a good response, but we're hoping that helps inform the application process for these funds.
Very good. Questions? Thank you.
Sure.
I'm good. Motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we close the record and adopt and enact the ordinance pertaining to the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund as presented.
I have a motion, the second, is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is proclamations. We have three proclamations today. The first one is Bi-Local Week, so Caroline Trossback, Ag Specialist.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Caroline Trossback, the Agricultural Development Specialist with Economic Development, and I'm here to celebrate Bi-Local Challenge Week. The Bi-Local Challenge was started in southern Maryland in 2007, and it's grown in reach and impact since then. You can support the challenge by shopping at local farms, stands, markets, wineries, breweries, restaurants, and businesses that feature local products. You can click Bi-Local, Bi-Local on calvertag.com to find what and where to buy. You can start today at the Calvert Health Farmers Market at the North Campus parking lot, 2:30 to 5:30 p.m. Celebrate the week in Calvert County on Monday, July 28, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Tedmer's Produce Stand at Rolling Acres Farm. Tickets are $5, which includes family-friendly activities and over 30 vendors. Anyone can take the challenge at bilocalchallenge.com and keep buying local all year. Now let's meet some of the farmers and makers who make all of this possible. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Dunn with Cardinal Creek Plant Farm, and also representing the North Beach Farmers Market, which is every Saturday morning, 8:00 to 11:30, all the way, all the way through October 26 this year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Dunn. I own Cardinal Creek Plant Farm alongside my brother and my parents, and I am also the president of the Calvert County Farmers Market Association.
How are you doing?
Good morning. I'm Debbie Jones with Windy Willow Farm. We have a farm in Sunderland, been selling meat from the farm for 15 years now, and so come see me.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Orange, representing Calvert Health Medical Center today, and we host the Tuesday Farmers Market this afternoon.
Hi, my name is Treasure. I'm the owner of my mustard seed. We grow microgreens in the county. We've been growing for about six years now. We do the North Beach Farmers Market, and we just recently opened up a farm store in Owings that carries locally sourced items, so this is right up our alley.
Hello, I'm Bobby Bonner, owner of Bull Rush's Cafe and Caney Creek Catering, and we use a lot of these guys' products, and we set up every Saturday at North Beach Farmers Market for our food trucks.
Morning, everybody. I'm Shelby Watson Hampton with the Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission, known as S-Matic, and we are pleased to be working with the farmers in southern Maryland, and all the producers, and those who support, like you all, and the restaurants, and the catering businesses. And it was mentioned, but I'm going to mention it again, we have our annual Bi-Local Challenge event, which is hosted at a different farm in southern Maryland every year, and this year it is in Calvert County. It's at Tedmer's Produce at Rolling Acres Farm this coming Monday. It's going to be from 5:30 to 8:30, and tickets are $5, children under six are free. We have 30-plus local vendors and farmers who will be showcasing their products. We'll have live music, pony rides, carriage rides, face painting. It's a great night to come out and support local, buy some good stuff, and, you know, support the Bi-Local Challenge. Thank you.
All right, good introduction. I'm Karen. Matt Tedmer, Tedmer's Produce and Rolling Acres Farm. We're very excited and honored to host this S-Matic event on Monday, the 28th. We also sell local produce grown on our farm and sourced from other farms throughout the county as well, and have a fall festival every year, September through October, which we are gearing up for and excited to see everyone there.
Matt didn't have anything to say? Matt usually just talks and talks and talks. I'm just surprised. You'll have to excuse my back. But as most of you know, I don't do proclamations, although I do do two a year, I always do the ag-related proclamations because I have a little bit of experience in that area. And today, we want to talk about Bi-Local Week. People in Calvert County love to ride around and look at the rural landscapes and the farms, and those farms need to be profitable. So this is your one opportunity to support our local farms by buying local. And you can go around the county to the local farm stands and the farmers' markets and buy just about anything you need. If you haven't been Y1, take a minute, you can go to the Calvert County website, you can find out where they are, what they sell, and participate. That money stays right here in the community, helps support our farmers, helps support the community, keeps those farms farming, which is what we're all trying to do, to keep those rural spaces rural. We don't want to see them covered up in houses, we want to see them farmed. And to do that, a farmer has to make money. So I just want to say that the Bi-Local Challenge has been going on for a pretty long time. Yeah. Started here in southern Maryland, and then somebody made it a statewide event, so now we celebrate it all across the state. But as I said, it's a year-long thing, don't just do it for a week. You know, the challenge is to buy something local every day for that week, but do it all year long as much as you can to support our farmers and our ag community. So I want to thank all of you for coming out today from your busy schedules. As a young man said, he's got to get to a farmer's market. If you haven't been at the one at the hospital, it's a great farmer's market, it's every Tuesday afternoon in the back parking lot, you can't really see it unless you go in there to look for it. So please participate as much as you can. And so I have a proclamation to read. Whereas Calvert County agriculture, aquaculture, forestry, and wild harvest watermen provide high-quality, locally grown, and harvested products. Whereas local farmers, foresters, and watermen link the past to the present and are vital to the county's economic, environment, and quality of life. And whereas support for Calvert County's local producers and harvesters is found through its citizens' desire to retain our farmland and waterways, and their chance to purchase fresh, locally grown, and harvested produce, various meats and beverages from local breweries and wineries, which contribute to higher nutrition, better taste, less waste, and less pollution. And whereas Calvert County is committed to promoting local agricultural enterprise and calls upon all citizens to choose products produced and harvested in the region's farmlands and waterways daily. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners that the week of July 17 through 27, 2025, be known as Bi-Local Week in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage all citizens to participate in the Bi-Local Challenge, pledging to enjoy one Maryland-grown product every day during Bi-Local Week. Given our hands and seal, this 22nd day of July, 2025, signed by all five. Congratulations.
All right, and Caroline and Mr. Bonner, will you go to the back? Yep. Okay, so you want, you can stand right here. Perfect, sir. Smile. Treasure, can you move a little to your right? Perfect. Three, two, one. Congratulations. Good to see you. Good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, cute. They wanted to know who gets the proclamations. No, you. Yeah. You got it. I love the farm trucks. That's the best eating.
So the next proclamation is for National Night Out. Commissioner Cox?
I think I said you're hosting. I was giving it to you.
Check with Caroline.
They wanted to know who gets the proclamation.
I love the farm trucks. That's the best eating.
So the next proclamation is for National Night Out. Commissioner Cox.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. I'm Candy DiAgostino. I'm the Coordinator of the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, and I just want to say a couple of quick things about National Night Out. I know you guys have had a long agenda this morning, so we won't take too much time, but I did want to let the community know that National Night Out does help strengthen community and police partnerships, and that is the basis of National Night Out. But to do that, it's a partnership, and it's a team effort. Not only do we coordinate it, but we couldn't do it without our Sheriff's Office, our State Police, Public Safety, Fire EMS, and a multitude of community agencies that go out to the communities to share info. So I want to thank everybody for supporting the event, and I have a number of people here representing their communities and the agencies that are supporting us, so I would like for them to come up and introduce themselves.
Come on up.
Good morning. My name is Howard Long, and I'm representing National Night Out for the community of Yarley Hills in Prince Frederick.
Come on forward.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jolita Simmons, and I am one of the managers over at Yarley Hills Community Center.
Thank you.
Mackenzie Orange, Calvert Health Medical Center, and we'll be at quite a few locations this year, so we're very excited.
Hi, Sarah Coffey. I'm the Coordinator for the Judy Center at Calvert Elementary, and I'm representing the Calvert Town community.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynn Taylor, and I'm representing Calvert Town.
Good morning, Commissioners. JD Denton, I'm representing Brooms Island. Also, just want to say thank you for holding this proclamation and recognizing this event is very important to us. Not only do we have that bond with the Sheriff's Office and local Fire EMS and State Police, but it allows us to get in the community. You just talked about purchasing local and stuff like that, so we bring in local food vendors at our event and stuff like that, and we even bring Pathfinders, Calvert Library, and Parks and Recs. Appreciate you guys for that today.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Denton, Vice President with Brooms Island. My brother covered a lot of the topics there. I do want to mention that we will have the helicopter back again. It comes around 5:30, and we have a few other exciting things with the Sheriff's Office. Thank you.
My name is Rick Salin, and I'm here with...
Megan Trudeau Dyson.
We're here with the Calvert Beach Civic Association, and we're happy and excited to be sponsoring the National Night Out with Calvert Beach along with Long Beach.
Yeah, and apparently Poppy decided she needs to be part of everything.
Bring her up. Come on. Bring her up. Get her coins. I don't make her happy.
My name is Glenn Mason, and I represent Grade A Post 220 of the American Legion. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Nate Smith, Recreation Division Chief, Parks and Recreation. We're excited to be a part of this at many locations again this year, so thank you all for participating.
Good morning. I'm Kimberly Shu. I'm here to represent my community shores of Calvert in Dunkirk, and as far as I know, this is our first time participating, so we're excited and can't wait to welcome everybody. So thank you.
Good morning. Lieutenant Mearns, Commander of the State Police Barrack here in Calvert County. I want to thank all of you again for acknowledging this wonderful event, and just reiterate that we're excited once again to be out here, normally the hottest day of the year, or hottest evening of the year for this, so I hope to see many of you out there as well, Commissioners, et cetera. So with that, we're proud to be a part of this team, this partnership, and we're looking forward to it again this year. Thank you.
Good morning. Dave McDowd, Director of Public Safety, and I would just like to thank you all for acknowledging the hard work and efforts and commitments and sacrifice that our volunteers and our paid people and our law enforcement put forth every day to keep our county safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Kelly Carlson, Assistant Division Chief for Career EMS. Just thankful to participate with the volunteers and work as a team to make sure everybody's represented and out there for the community.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sergeant Krebs with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office, Court Services Unit. Our unit helps coordinate with the State Police and National Resource Police to have personnel, resources, and other things that we bring to the communities that we're trying to reach out to.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Elton Henry Hunt. I'm the Detective Sergeant with the Maryland State Police. Thank you.
Good morning. Christopher Shannon, Chief of Calvert Advanced Life Support, all the volunteer paramedics in the county, and we're just excited to get out and interact with the community in a positive time as opposed to the normal stressful times that we interact with the community.
Good morning. Ken Miller, Division Chief, Career EMS. Again, echoing Chief Shannon's sentiment there is we enjoy being able to spend time that's positive versus the negative and the bad sacrifice time that we have to normally see people in time of need, so thank you for the opportunity.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, Sheriff Cox, thank you for having this proclamation. This night is wonderful. I see a lot of Commissioners out there interacting with our community. Thank you. And we had a football game last year at Calvert Town, and we ruined some uniforms, but that's what it's all about. Hopefully we have another pickup football game this year, but thanks for having this event, and we hope to see everyone out there.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I just want to cover the neighborhoods who aren't able to be here today, so everyone knows. We have Bayside Forest, Dares Beach, Northeast Community Center will be at Kellum Field. We have Oakland Hall, Patuxent View, and White Sands, so I just wanted to make everyone aware. And if the community would like a full list of names and times, they can go to the hopeforcalvert.org site, and they should be able to get all of that information.
Thank you, Candace. Come on up, please.
So we only had one talk about food, was Brooms Island. So that's a big question. Who has the most food and the best of it?
That's right.
Everybody goes. But what a great event, and it seems to get larger each year, and I know for me as a Commissioner, I can only attend two at a time because I'm full and stuffed and places go, but it's all good. But what a good partnership we have with the Sheriff's Office, the State Police, and even the EMS, Public Safety, and the communities that are out there to come out, and it's just a great partnership that gets larger each year, and thank you for all you do getting this together and all the hard work that goes into this partnership. So thank you. So with that, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 5th, 2025, called National Night Out. And whereas the 42nd Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Calvert County to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, community, and crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Inc., is the local sponsor for National Night Out in partnership with the Calvert County Sheriff's Office and Maryland State Police Barrack U, and plays a vital role in joint crime, drug misuse, and violence prevention efforts in Calvert County. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Calvert County be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drug misuse, and violence in Calvert County. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Calvert County Commissioners that on August 5th be known as National Night Out in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are called upon to join the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Inc., Calvert County Sheriff's Office, and Maryland State Barrack U, and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 42nd Annual National Night Out event, given our hands and seals this 22nd day of July, 2025, signed by all five County Commissioners. Thank you all for what you do.
All right, we're going to scooch in a little bit on this side.
Good morning, guys. Put it right outside there.
I don't know. I'm just going with what she tells me to. I need the whole back row to move to the left. She loves the edge. Wish her heart to you. Move to your left.
I'm afraid of Catherine.
I think I got everybody. Wait, nope. Director McDowell, I missed her name. If you have one row, please. Thank you. I think we got everybody. Did you have a chance to blink? Oh my gosh. Don't forget anyone. Three, two, one. Thank you. Four, five, six, seven, eight. We got everybody. Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you, President. Thank you, President. I don't know yet. Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good day. Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Have a great day.
Right. So the last proclamation is for Parks and Recreation Month. Commissioner Grasso.
Aye. Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, please. Good morning, Commissioners, again. Launched in 1985, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Park and Recreation Month. Each July, we celebrate the parks and recreation professionals and how they improve the lives of tens of millions of people, making a lasting impact in communities across the country. Park and recreation programs are essential to community health and well-being, and help cultivate lifelong friendships, memories, and family bonds that people hold dear decades later. This year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, reminds us of the contributions of more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time and seasonal workers and volunteers who maintain our country's close-to-home parks. The Calvert County Parks and Recreation of 40 years ago looked a lot different than it does today. In 1985, we were the Division of Parks and Recreation with only three district parks and the Mount Hope Community Center, serving a population of just over 40,000. In the decade that followed, we would establish the Southern and Northeast Community Centers, as well as acquire Breezy Point Beach and Campground. The early 2000s saw further growth with the opening of Cove Point Pool, acquisition of Chesapeake Hills Golf Course, 2010 opening of the Edward T. Hall Aquatic Center, and the 2013 purchase of the Ward Farm property. Momentum continued into 2017, when the divisions of Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources were merged and became the Department of Parks and Recreation, combining Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Parks and Facilities under one umbrella. Soon after, the county purchased the Ward Farm property and was donated the Dominion property. In just the last five years, we have celebrated the opening of the new playground at Dunkirk District Park, the opening of Ward Farm Recreation and Nature Park, the opening of the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course Clubhouse, the addition of the dedicated pickleball courts at Hallowing Point Park, refurbishment, and the addition of a mural at the Cove Point Basketball Courts, and the opening of the new tennis and pickleball complex at Dunkirk District Park. Today, CCPR supports and maintains 34 properties and 22 school fields totaling 2,293 acres and serves a population of over 95,000. In the last four decades, we have grown alongside the growth of the county. Together, we are building and maintaining sustainable parks and green spaces for current and future generations. Together, we're building thriving communities focused on health and well-being. Together, we're building high-quality programs and spaces accessible and inclusive for all. Together, we help people play and connect through activities, classes, special events, and more. I'd like to invite some of my Parks and Rec colleagues to join me up here to celebrate Parks and Rec Month.
Okay, great, great. Come on up. Anybody else? Come on up. Introduce yourselves.
That's right. We're all shy, as you know. I'm Nate Smith, Recreation Division Chief.
Amanda Stow-Wagon, Park and Safety Division Chief. Hi again. I'm Stephanie Spurling. I'm the park planner.
Good morning. Greg Hefner, Park Superintendent.
Good morning. Kirsten Perry, Special Facilities Division Chief.
I'm happy to say it's good afternoon. Victoria Jacks, Business Manager.
Nola Formay-Duvall, Executive Administrative Assistant.
Brendan Medea, Aquatics Division Chief.
Good afternoon. Patricia Blue Powers, Hospitality Manager.
Ken Geyer, Recreation Systems Analyst.
Good afternoon. Mike Marr, General Manager, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course.
Hi there. Judy Peterson, Chair of the Park Advisory Board.
Hello. Lydia Wells, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation.
Good morning. Brian Graybrick, Assistant General Manager, Chesapeake Hills Golf Course.
Hello, Commissioners. Bob Branham, Director of Parks and Recreation. I just want to thank you for acknowledging, as well as County Administrator Turner, for acknowledging Parks and Recreation Month. I would have loved to have filled your chambers today, but as you know, we don't close. We operate 365 days a year, some facilities 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. The reason I mention that is there are over 400 teammates still in the field making sure that we're running facilities and keeping parks and play spaces open for our residents and guests. So this acknowledgement is as much for those in the field as it is for those that could join you today. So thank you again.
Thank you all for being here today. Calvert County, I think, is the best county in the state of Maryland, and in part, it's because of all of you. I've been here 50 years, and I've watched the park system grow, always through your parks and recs, the programs that you have, that we were able to take our children to, the sports that our children played, and now the clubhouse at the golf course is adding so much more to our community. And you all do such a great job there, and in general, you all do a very good job in managing parks and recs and keeping the programs going. I know when I come from my home off of Jewel Road, and I go to not Safeway, Giant, or Harris Teeters, or whatever, I go the back way and I go past Ward Farm Park, and I always say to my husband, it does my heart good to see all of those children there and their parents, and I walk the trails with my husband, and I know Dunkirk has done that. And I went with Director Branham and toured all the parks because I had not been to all of them, even though our children played sports. They're so well-maintained, and you all do such a good job. You add so much to our community, so thank you all. So I will now read the proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the United States, including Calvert County, Maryland, and are vital to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities by providing therapeutic recreation services for individuals with mental and physical disabilities, aiding in the prevention of chronic disease, and supporting the overall mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs enhance a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, business attraction, and retention, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, provide spaces for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, enhance air quality, offer vegetative buffers to the development, and provide essential wildlife habitats, proving these areas are fundamental to the environmental health of our community. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and Calvert County, Maryland recognizes the many benefits derived from its diverse parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners that the month of July be known as Parks and Recreation Month in Calvert County, Maryland. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our local Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as those at the federal and state levels. Given under our hands and seal this 22nd day of July, 2025, signed by all five of your Commissioners. Thank you all again. I go the back way and I go past Ward Farm Park, and I always say to my husband, it does my heart good to see all of those children there and their parents, and I walk the trails with my husband, and I know Dunkirk has done that, and I went with Director Branham and toured all the parks because I had not been to all of them, even though our children played sports. They're so well-maintained, and you all do such a good job, you add so much to our community, so thank you all. So I will now read the proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the United States, including Calvert County, Maryland, and are vital to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities by providing therapeutic recreation services for individuals with mental and physical disabilities, aiding in the prevention of chronic disease and supporting the overall mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs enhance a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, business attraction, and retention and crime reduction. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, provide spaces for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, enhance air quality, offer vegetative buffers to the development, and provide essential wildlife habitats, proving these areas are fundamental to the environmental health of our community. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and Calvert County, Maryland recognizes the many benefits derived from its diverse parks and recreation resources. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Calvert County Board of County Commissioners that the month of July be known as Parks and Recreation Month in Calvert County, Maryland. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our local Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as those at the federal and state levels. Given under our hands and sealed this twenty-second day of July, twenty twenty-five, signed by all five of your Commissioners. Thank you all again.
Thank you so much.
Two things, if you're in the front row, can you turn your ID around so your photos are hidden? And everyone squish in the front row, please. Don't you like each other? Actually, the first one's group, one step to your left in the front row, please. I got a break, push off. I missed your move, a little to your left, please. Thank you, thank you.
Smile.
Smile. Thanks so much for all you do.
How are you, sir? Everything good? Thank you.
Emily. So we're gonna take a little break in the agenda because earlier I tried to recognize Cynthia, but she skipped out on me because she had the work to do, of course. So now that she's back, before she skips out again, could you please come forward, Cynthia? Sorry. I know, you are. So we just want to take this opportunity to recognize Cynthia Harris, who's the deputy at the Treasurer's Office, has been there many years, I'm not gonna say how many.
Thirty is fine.
Cynthia's been there thirty years, and has, has, has worked very hard to maintain that office. Even our past treasurer had some health issues, and Cynthia stepped up and ran the office, and then when the treasurer resigned, Cynthia stepped up and acted as treasurer until the new treasurer got appointed. But Cynthia, we just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service going above and beyond, keeping that Treasurer's Office up and running, so that the citizens got served. And we greatly appreciate you taking on that extra responsibility.
Thank you. Thank you. They have served by just not wearing a uniform.
I'm gonna miss your, I'm gonna miss your humor at our department head.
Hey, I'll come visit. I'm gonna miss my comedy hour.
Although, you don't need to help looking good in these pictures, I'm just, I'll be there, thank you for everything you did.
I'll be back, I'll come back, maybe once in a while, I'll come hang out with you all.
You gotta come back to get that side straight.
Just for the record, Cynthia's not going anywhere, but she's gonna go back to doing her normal responsibilities. All right, thank you Cynthia. All right, now, the next item on the agenda is appointments, Miss Emily? Because we have a bunch today.
Good afternoon Commissioners, I don't get to say that very often. Emily Sharif's Constituent Services Specialist, and it's a good day because we have several appointments for your consideration today. First is for the Board of Appeals. Staff recommends that you appoint Ronald Scott as the second alternate to the Board of Appeals, and following this action, no vacancies would remain.
So moved.
I motion a second that we appoint Ronald Scott as the second alternate to the Board of Appeals. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Second is for the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Staff recommends that you reappoint Mary Lanham and Kazia Sweeney, and appoint Raymond Mahar, Alessia Odell, and Eric Thompson to the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and following this action, no vacancies would remain.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we reappoint Mary Lanham and Casey Sweeney, sorry, and appoint Raymond Mahar, Alessia Odell, and Eric Thompson to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Third is for the Economic Development Authority. Staff recommends that you appoint Michelle McGuffin to the Economic Development Authority, and following this action, no vacancies would remain.
So moved.
I have a, I have a motion and a second that we appoint Michelle McGuffin to the Economic Development Authority. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Fourth is for the Calvert County Marine Museum Board of Governors. Staff recommends that you appoint Dr. Michael Brooks and Tim Carvias to the Marine Museum Board of Governors, and following this action, two vacancies would remain.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Dr. Michael Brooks and Tim Carvias to the Calvert County Marine Museum Board of Governors. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Fifth is for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Staff recommends that you appoint David Braun to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and following this action, one vacancy would remain.
Second. I have a motion and a second that we appoint David Braun to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Sixth is for the Calvert County Family Network. Staff recommends that you reappoint Deborah Harris to the Family Network, and following this action, two vacancies would remain.
So moved.
I have a motion that, and the second that we reappoint Deborah Harris to the Calvert County Family Network. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Seventh is for the Calvert County Commission for Women. Staff recommends that you appoint Lynn Williams to the Commission for Women, and following this action, four vacancies would remain.
Second.
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Lynn Williams to the Calvert County Commission for Women. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And final appointments for today is for the Employees Retirement Plan Board of Trustees. Staff recommends that you appoint Eric Thompson and Tim Carvias to the Employees Retirement Plan Board of Trustees, and following this action, two vacancies would remain.
I have a motion and a second that we appoint Eric Thompson and Timothy Carvias to the Employees Retirement Plan Board of Trustees. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So for anybody out there listening, we still have lots of vacancies on boards and commissions. If you go to the county website, there's a listing of those boards and commissions, and we would appreciate your participation. Next item on the agenda is consent, there are two items under consent today. Department of Public Safety FY twenty twenty-five Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant. Item two, Department of Community Resources Community Development Block Grant Budget Amendment. Is there any objection to the two items under consent today?
Make a motion that we adopt and approve the consent agenda items.
Second. I have a motion and a second that we adopt those items under consent today. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, thank you. The next item on the agenda is new business. Department of Technology Services Approval of the Multi-Year Contract for Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Director Pereira, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Director, Stephen Pereira, Director of Technology Services.
Network Supervisor Technology Services, John Silkox.
And Employee of the Year.
Don't we leave that out?
I'll read the memo. Background. The Department of Technology Services, TS, manages the implementation, support, and administration of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement, MSEA, for Calvert County Government. This, this software is currently procured through Microsoft Authorized Seller, SHI International, SHI, under a three-year subscription agreement, which expired on June thirty, twenty twenty-five. TS was, TS is in the process of renewing the MSEA with a new thirty-eight-month subscription in consultation with SHI. It was recommended the renewal date be moved away from the start of the fiscal year to ease administrative processing and avoid the beginning of year workload. The additional two months will shift the renewal cycle, establishing a new renewal date of September first, twenty twenty-nine. Fiscal impact. The total cost of the renewed, renewed subscription is one million eight hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, ninety-two cents. Annual billing will occur on July first of each year, with the first three periods priced at five hundred and ninety thousand, forty-one dollars and ninety-two cents each. The final two-month extension will cost forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, sixteen cents. Funding for this subscription is allocated in the TS contracted services account. Conclusions and recommendations. Staff recommends the board approve and adopt the resolution authorizing a thirty-eight-month agreement of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement. Staff further request awarding the subscription to SHI International for a term not to exceed twenty years, including the initial contract period and all available renewal options in coordination with the Department of Finance and Budget. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't think so. No.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you want a motion, sir?
Yes.
Mr. President, I make a move that we adopt and act the resolution authorizing a thirty-eight-month agreement of Microsoft Enterprise Agreement and approve the award of subscription to SHI International for a term not to exceed twenty years, including the initial contract period and all available renewable options.
Have a make, motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Department of Public Safety Federal Emergency Management Administration Grant Freeze Update. Director McDowell. And team.
Dr. Buckmaster.
Good afternoon, Doctor.
Good afternoon.
I got a pain here in my elbow.
Sorry, wrong doctor.
I was trying to get out of the coat bag.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Dave McDowell, Director of Public Safety, I have with me today Dr. Kara Buckmaster, Emergency Management Division Chief, Mike Rierson. We're gonna revisit today what we put on pause several months ago with respect to the FEMA grants for individual homes throughout the county. And with that being said, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Buckmaster.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Background. On Friday, February twenty-eighth, the Division of Emergency Management was informed by the Maryland Department of Emergency Management that the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, had placed several grant programs on hold pending further review. This included multiple programs utilized by EM, Emergency Management, including the Emergency Management Performance Grants, EMPG, the State Homeland Security Program Grant, SHSP, and the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program Grants, HMA. Subsequently, on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the Board of County Commissioners voted to pause the Hazard Mitigation four-two-six-one dash twenty elevation project, the Hazard Mitigation four-five-eight-three dash zero-two acquisition project, and the Fiscal Year twenty-three and twenty-four State Homeland Security Program projects. In May of twenty twenty-five, EM was advised by the Maryland Department of Emergency Management that FEMA had completed its review and released funding for several grant programs, including EMPG, SHSP, and HMA. EM also confirmed that the county received outstanding reimbursement requests for these projects. Discussion. The Department of Public Safety Division of Emergency Management wishes to present to the board an update on the grant freeze and discuss moving forward with the affected projects. Fiscal impact. A total of one million, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-two cents in outstanding reimbursement requests, which were included in the March presentation, have been received, and a total of one hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents in new reimbursement requests are in process. The remaining federal fund amounts of grants affected by the freeze are HMA four-two-six-one dash twenty, one hundred and six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, HMA four-five-eight-three dash zero-two, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-four cents, HMA four-five-eight-three zero-two management fee, eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-two cents, SHSP twenty twenty-two, ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars, SHSP twenty twenty-three, ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-five cents, SHSP twenty twenty-four, ninety-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. The total is nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight and eighty-three cents. Conclusion. Staff requests that the B OCC consider the updated information presented on these grant programs, and if deemed favorable, approve the projects to move forward as previously planned. In the essence of time, I'd also like to prevent you a bottom line upfront before we go through the presentation, and then if you have additional questions, you can ask me, and we can target those specifically. So the top five things that you need to know right now are that FEMA completed its review and lifted the hold. All of our in-progress projects are still funded and approved to move forward by FEMA. Some funding streams have closed, and that may impact future opportunities, but it does not affect these grants specifically. We have received all previously outstanding reimbursement requests, and new ones are processing normally. And I actually just found out yesterday, we received another one. So, and then at this time, everything has returned to normal operations, and we would like to move forward with the remaining projects before the funding expires. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
So, well, I do have a question. How many FEMA properties do we currently have that we've?
That the county has acquired?
Has already acquired, have been, whether they've been cliff properties where the homes have been excavated, or whatever the case may be.
That's a good question. I know there was over a dozen in twenty, the twenty-ten project, there's been two here, three there since then. I'd have to go back and confirm the actual number, but I believe it's over two dozen, somewhere around there, between twenty and thirty.
And we know that, of course, once the houses are excavated, that's a non-buildable lot.
Correct.
So I guess I can make two motions. If you're ready, sir.
Yeah.
First, I move that we approve allowing the listed projects moving forward within the approved budget.
Second. I have a motion and a second that we approve allowing the listed projects to move forward within the approved budget. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So the next motion, it's, it's kinda new, but we've talked about it in the past several times, but I think now's a good time to bring it up. I'd like us to explore surplus in the current FEMA properties, and maybe for an opportunity for us to generate revenue immediately, as well as future tax revenue. Currently, their accounting and properties are just sitting there. And to me, some of them are liability to county itself. But I'd like for the county attorney to explore, like, say, the possibility of surplus in those properties.
Second. So I have a motion and a second that we explore the ability to surplus those properties that we are currently holding that have been taken under FEMA grants.
Correct.
Clear, Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, sir, that project's actually with the Department of Public Safety right now.
I know there are some legal issues on that about that.
Not presently, no.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll get that balance to you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Nobody's in the room, so. Nobody's in the room, so.
And no one's on Zoom either.
Unless Marty has a comment he wants to make today. We're good. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll keep it quick because I know we got a lot more to do this afternoon. So I just want to congratulate the new treasurer that we had in here this morning. Congratulations for her and good luck. Also wanted to congratulate the three deputies that were here. Good luck in their new endeavors. And a little bit of history lesson. We did the Hollowing Point update for the park. So the Hollowing Point Bridge was built in 1951. It went for toll bridge until 1955 at a quarter a car because, and they took the toll away because of, well, no. It wasn't much traffic, so they took the toll away. And the hollering comes from, it used to be a ferry before the bridge. And then when the Indians were here, they used to holler across the river to bring the canoe so they could do back and forth. So just a little history lesson.
Very good.
Very good.
You remember it?
No, I don't. That is just so wrong.
That's all I have.
At least I'm here to take it.
That's all I have, sir. Yeah, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Commissioner Hart.
Just echo Commissioner Cox. Congratulations to everyone and, yeah, for time I'm good.
Thank you. Commissioner Grassau.
Congratulations to Amanda Delina. Happy birthday to our president, Buddy Hand. And congratulations to the three new deputies. Commissioner Cox, I met them previously. It's a good group. We've got a great force. Looking over my schedule, I did what I enjoy most in this job. I had a whole heck of a lot of constituent meetings the past week and that's the funnest job, funnest part about this job.
It is. Commissioner Irwin.
So I didn't say much during the economic development presentation. There's a lot of listening, but you know, he nailed a lot of things that are definitely unpopular topics. But there again, I think you have to look at it from every perspective. Housing in Calver County, particularly for our seniors and 20 to 30-year-olds, it continues to be a challenge. And like I said, we've tried to come up with different ways to address it. And I don't, we have a great way to address it yet. We have some ideas. With the change in the way our citizens conduct business, mail ordering, store pickup, our brick and mortar establishments continue to have their challenges. I believe when we redid the zoning ordinance and we voted on it, it allows us the opportunity to work with an individual, I say individual, a real estate person who has those brick and mortar joints that may be stagnant, that may not be as viable as they once were and need to be changed or updated. And it might give us the opportunity to look at mixed use, which would allow us the opportunity to have those vibrant walking communities that we talk about so very often, that really outside of North Chesapeake Beach and Solomons that we don't have. And it's a challenge because Route 4 runs up through the middle of our town centers. It's a challenge for a person that may be handicapped in a wheelchair, older, to get from one side of Route 4 to the other without getting in a car and actually making that drive. So it may be an opportunity there. Water and sewer, you know, that was addressed several times throughout the presentation today. With the county surrounded by water and the number of failing septics that we have on low-lying areas in our county shorelines, whether it be the Cove Point Beach area, the Jump Point Beach area, parts of CRE, and a lot of people are having to go to holding tanks. And the holding tanks, as we've talked about, what that does for real estate value is devastating to the homeowner. We need to try to plan ahead. I think we've failed to do that in a lot of cases here. And I think we need to plan ahead with providing infrastructure, particularly these low-lying areas that could have a significant effect on our environment. And I mean, if it's leaking into the bay, if it's leaking into our rivers, creeks, streams, whatever the case may be, we gotta have a plan. Lastly, received some complaints and just want to put this out there for the public about the North Beach Senior Center. Primarily, there was air conditioning issues there. It seems like we just had a catastrophic plumbing event there. And that building's really not that old. We shouldn't be going through these problems, I don't believe, but things happen. We're aware of it. We're working with Community Resources and Office on Agent to get these issues fixed as soon as we can. And last but not least, there's been some incidents in Prince Frederick, particularly this past weekend. We had several county-owned properties, private property being a church, that were defaced by a certain population. There was actually a funeral planned at one of the churches and when they arrived, there was blood and there was clothing and they required like an emergency cleanup. And further investigation around that area were two county properties that also were covered in blood and just trashed. I just want to let the citizens know that we're not letting these go unnoticed. We're not letting them go. We're gonna try to deter this type of behavior from happening and we're working with law enforcement, we're working with Parks and Rec, we're working with the Health Department, Community Resources to address these concerns on both sides. We get it, you know, there's a whole lot of moving parts here and we're trying to put them all together to make sure that that we get these things addressed. There's no reason in the world why any of our citizens should feel unsafe walking through a pathway or enjoying a park due to a small population that is ruining it, for lack of better words, for the majority of our citizens. So just to let you know, we're working on it. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, once again, I want to thank Commissioner Irwin for filling in for me last week. I was on vacation and it was my birthday and it was a different birthday because I turned 70. And, you know. Again? I don't feel any different, but somebody said, oh, 70, 70's the new 40. And I said, no, this is not the new 40. But it does change your perspective when you start to say you're 70, because you know the average age of a US citizen is 76. And you do start to think about.
When you start looking on Facebook and all these people passing that you grew up with and it does weird you out. I mean, I went to two celebrations of life. Both started at 3 o'clock. Both were class of 85, no, no, I'm sorry. One was 85, but one was, I mean, it's just, it's weird.
Yeah. So, but I woke up this morning, I knew my name and I dressed myself, so it's a great day. And I too want to congratulate the new treasurer, Amanda. I met with her before I went away and had a good conversation with her. I think that she's got her, got her goals in place and she's got a good pathway to meet those goals. I think she's going to do well. So, and we again want to thank Cynthia for filling in the interim because it really wasn't her job, but you know, she stepped up and went above and beyond, so we greatly appreciate that. And the new deputies, you know, we're very blessed in this county. It is one of the safest in the state. And I think, I didn't ask the sheriff today, but I think we're 100% staffed, which I'm not sure there's another county in the state that can say that. They're all struggling to get officers in place. So it says a lot about this community. You know, I know, I know it's about the sheriff too, but it's also about the community. People want to come here and work in this community because our citizens still respect law enforcement. And they feel that when they come here, and I think it's a great incentive for officers to come here and work. Because today we had one transfer from Prince George's County. Not too long ago, we had one transfer from Anaronda County. And I know we've had two transfer from St. Mary's. So that says a lot about us. And I think it's the whole community that deserves the credit for that. It's not just one individual or a few individuals. It's all of us that are creating that atmosphere that people want to come here and protect and serve. So I want to wish them all the best and a very safe and happy career. But at the end of the day, you know, we're all here serving. Today, our, the presentation that we heard Commissioner Irwin talked about and we talked about during that presentation, you know, it is a challenge when you live on a peninsula and you really don't want growth to ruin your atmosphere, but you have to generate revenue because government operates on revenue. And I said it before, it costs, you know, to live in this environment. And when you have limited opportunities for revenue, you know, it's hard. People say, well, just cut. Well, you can't just cut, you know, and costs increase. And I just read in the paper, Charles County, I didn't realize, Charles County has the highest property taxes in the state of Maryland. So, you know, it's something that at some point in time is gonna come to a head here in Calver County about, you know, what we look like moving forward and how we move forward. You know, we talk about water and sewer and it's expensive. And the, you know, the pro side of that is you fix your septic issues with failing systems. The bad side of those is now you open up all these opportunities for development that didn't exist for non-perccable land that's currently sitting idle. You run a sewer line in front of them, you just gave them an opportunity to develop. And none of us want to do that. And we are challenged with trying to help our citizens out on pumpouts because that's not cheap. And as Commissioner Hart pointed out, you know, your home value, what is your house worth when you're on pumpouts? And so, you know, at some point in time in the future, there're gonna have to be some really tough decisions made about how we move forward. And we talk about transportation. It's the same thing. There are improvements that are needed in the county to improve transportation, but they're very, very expensive. And, you know, it's just tough. Citizens want good amenities. They want to see improvements and they all cost money. And, you know, to sit these five chairs and balance how you provide what the citizens want, keep their taxes reasonable and maintain government is quite the challenge. So it's not easy sitting in this chair, as we say lots of times. But we just want to remind everybody of a couple of things. The Bi-Local Challenge Event is gonna be at Roland Acres Farm. That's on Old Route 4, which is 765, just north of St. Leonard's, right past the St. Leonard's, just above the St. Leonard's Post Office. That's on Monday night from 4:30 to, I forget the timestamp, but it's next Monday night. And also National Night Out is August the 5th. It's always a great event. If you haven't attended one, like I think sure is at Calver. This is their first one. So if you live in that area, you should really come out there. I mean, it's their first one, but they're great events, brings communities out together. And as I said, it gets you an opportunity to meet some law enforcement and emergency services that normally when you interact with them, it's not in a good situation. But here's an opportunity where you can spend a little time and get to know them and you get to know one another. So it is a great opportunity. We all get out. We can't get to all of them. So if you don't see us at one, that doesn't mean we're not out somewhere, because I think there's like 13 of them. And I've tried my best and I think three is the best I could do on a night out because it's just, you know, you go there and you spend some time and they're spread out. So it's, but it's a great event. So want to come out and support that. And I think that's all I have as a 70-year-old man.
Ready for a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I move to recess to executive session pursuant to General Provisions Article Section 3-305B. One eye to discuss allowed personnel matters regarding those over whom this board has jurisdiction. One eye eye to discuss any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Four to consider a matter that concerns proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand or maintain an estate. And eight to consult with staff, consultants or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
I have a motion in a second that we move into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Everyone have a great day.
Thank you.